You wanted, you wanted to read?
Yes. In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty-one, public one, I would advise that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board in town hall, merely to the officially designated newspapers, a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating this meeting would take place via Zoom webinar on Monday, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. Craig Clender?
Here.
Joy Segal?
Here.
Steve Togger?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Here.
Amy Lawrence?
Here.
John Drew Hargani?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here. But as I indicated to Eileen before we got started, I have a few things that I would like to say tonight. And the first is that I'm under treatment for bronchitis, and so I will apologize in advance that you may not hear me very well, and I may not be able to continue talking for too long. And you, I know you guys are all saying, yeah, right, he's not going to talk a lot. Okay. The second thing I want to say is Jodi Sharma indicated by email to me that she could not be here tonight, and Amy Lawrence is our first alternate and will be taking her place. The third thing I want to say is it is very, very critical that each and every one of us visit each and every property that is on the agenda for the meeting. Now, why do I say that? First of all, by looking at the file that is filed by the applicant in each case, you cannot really see what's going on in the neighborhood and how this particular property may affect the immediate neighbors. Remember that the architects who file these files for the applicants are not interested in, because they don't get paid for making drawings of the neighboring properties, even if they didn't have the legal problem of walking on to a property where they have no business being on, which is called in the legal trade trespassing. But it is very, very critical to go out and look at these properties. I know that with regard to some of you, I am talking to people who have already been, who've already been converted to the, to what is required of board members. But some of you may take this as a possibility that if I have the time and if I can get around to it, I will do that. But you cannot really sit, in my judgment, effectively on these cases without actually having been there. I'm going to skip the whole lecture about how to approach the applicants because A, I've already made that speech earlier this year, and B, most of you already know what the issues are, and that you cannot ever, ever, ever talk about the application to either the applicant or to any of the next door neighbors. I do want to say one thing that's really important, and that is that very often we have cases where the applicant puts the case on and the most affected neighbors do not show up. That is not a free pass for the applicant. Our job is to protect the ordinances of Milburn Township, to protect the properties as they affect the neighborhood for the next thirty, forty, fifty years. And the fact that the next door neighbor doesn't show to complain might very well be because the next door neighbor is a personal friend of the applicant, or they just don't care enough to want to come to a board meeting. But it is very, very important for you to be sure to visit each one of these properties, even if, in many cases, by the way, you don't have to get out of your car because the requests relate to the front of the property. Okay, Eileen?
Yes.
Can you tell whether Mr. Clessy is in the audience?
He was. Let me just make sure he's still here.
We, um, I'm sorry, Joe, do we have?
We have memorializations first.
Yes.
We're, we're going to get back to the agenda in just a minute.
Yes, he is in the audience.
Yeah, can you bring him in for a minute?
You can. Hello, Tim. There he is.
Turn your camera on, Tim.
There you are.
There you are. Tim, we haven't started the meeting yet, but I asked Eileen to bring you in for two reasons. The first is to wish you a happy birthday. I saw on Facebook that your birthday was, I think, two days ago, is that correct, or yesterday?
You're muted.
You're muted. Unmute yourself.
You're still, we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, my birthday was yesterday.
Well, happy birthday to you. That's, that's the first thing I wanted to say to you. The second was
Yes.
that I am well known for having a really lousy memory, which is getting lousier every year. But I do remember one thing very clearly, and that is that about five years ago, you promised this board, you wouldn't, what am I going to say, Tim?
You're going to speak of lettering.
That's right. You were going to never
Fill out an application.
use your handwriting. Again, Eileen, you remember that, don't you?
The problem is, is that my wife was a little sick. That was the problem.
Excuse me, he has to speak louder, please.
Speak louder.
My wife was sick, but she's back now.
Well, good, I'm glad.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm glad she is, but you could have had one of the guys in your office do this for you because I know that I'm not the only member of this board who's had lots and lots of problems reading your handwriting, even on the case that you have on tonight, but we're not going to hold it against you because it's your birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday. Cut them out, Eileen.
All right, Tim, I'm booting you for now. Okay.
Okay. Now, the last thing I have to say involves the last case on the agenda for tonight. There's been a new development in that case within the last half an hour, and I'll let our, I'll let our attorney, yes, I know, Eileen.
I know nothing about this.
Well, I guess, I didn't either, said my wife, said, did you see, did you check your emails? This was about a half an hour ago. And I said, well, I haven't recently. She said, you better, before the meeting gets started. Anyway, I'll save that for the time being, but let me just talk about the last meeting, the last case on for tonight's hearing. It's the case on the corner of Milburn Avenue and Main Street, and it's a case in which Rob Simon has to recuse himself and cannot function as the board's attorney. So there will be a substitute attorney tonight. Now, I'm going to hold up a volume that's very well known to everybody in this field, that is, all the lawyers who practice in this field and people like Eileen David, who are the professionals in the field. It's called New Jersey Zoning and Land Use Administration, and it was authored originally by William Cox and Stuart Koenig. Mr. Cox put this enormous volume together and left, I think, the volume and this world in two thousand and ten. His place was taken by a man named Stu Koenig, whose name you will see following his on the cover. And Stuart Koenig was involved with this volume in the years two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. Mr. Koenig also, incidentally, was the attorney for the Milburn Planning Board during that period of time and went out to play tennis one night and did not return. So Mr. Koenig's place was taken, and now you can see that down at the bottom, it says revised and updated by, and there are two names there. One of them is Jonathan Drill, and Jonathan Drill, the name is on the cover of this volume because, for all intents and purposes, he is the editor with a woman named Lisa Johnbasta, who works with him, and they keep this volume up. This is the Bible for everyone in the field, right, Rob?
Yes, absolutely.
It's the Bible. It's where everybody goes who has an issue or a problem with a land use case. Okay, so why did I tell you all that story? Because Rob's place tonight will be taken by Jonathan Drill in the last case on the agenda tonight. Now, I was going to tell you that the case had a major legal issue involved. Apparently, that issue may have been resolved, but the issue was, and it's really still important for you to know this, that the, as you well know, this is an attempt by the applicant to mount additional telecommunications equipment on the roof of the building, and the owner of the building, it turns out the applicant is the holder of an easement on the roof of the building. The app, the owner insisted that the owner had not signed Eileen David's ownership page in the application form and therefore took the position that we had no jurisdiction to hear the case tonight. Our substitute attorney, Jonathan Drill, had a different view of the case. Well, I'll let him talk about where the case stands, when and if we get to that case. Okay, Eileen, we're going back to our agenda tonight, and I think the first thing on the agenda is, and it's not on the agenda because Eileen didn't realize that we had memorializing resolutions, but we do, excuse me, we do have two of them. And once again, I have to thank Joy Segal, who single-handedly, pretty much, single-handedly reviews these with our attorney, Rob Simon, before they're sent out to the board members. So, Rob, take it away.
So we have two resolutions, I believe, correct, Eileen, for tonight?
The first one is Cal three seven seven four, I think, three seven seven four dash twenty, Agawal at nine Burnside Drive.
Now, this is the matter on Burnside Drive that was a, as I recall, was a patio slash porch issue that finally got resolved by the use of a patio. And, Rob, you have produced the memorializing resolution in this case, and are there any other additions or corrections that anyone wants to make to this memorializing resolution that after it was gone over by Joy Segal with Rob, was circulated in final form? If not, is there a motion to adopt this memorializing resolution in calendar thirty-seven seventy-four dash twenty? Is there a motion? I'm hearing silence. That makes me very nervous.
Who's eligible to, who's eligible to vote on this?
Sorry about that. I move approval of memorialization of calendar number three seven seven four dash twenty.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who said that?
Craig.
Craig, okay, great.
Craig Clender?
Yes.
Joy Segal?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now we have the second memorializing resolution in calendar thirty-seven seventy-eight. Is that dash?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. I'm sorry. Mine doesn't have a dash. Or there it is, it's on the next line. Okay, this is the Bing Shen case that was before the board two meetings ago. Okay, is there a, is there a motion to adopt this resolution by someone who is at the meeting?
Move adoption.
Craig moves adoption. Second?
Second.
Wolfgang seconds it. Eileen?
Craig Clender?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Yep.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, so we now have, we have one set of minutes, is that correct, Eileen?
No, there's no minutes.
There are no minutes.
No minutes.
Okay. So we're now going to turn to the first case, which is, which is Bicone South.
Actually, they're not going forward tonight.
They're not going forward.
No, I sent to you guys' agenda.
Oh, I didn't get that. Or if I, if I got it, I didn't see it. It may have, I know, we have that problem. We have that problem, Eileen.
And I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just, just to clarify, Eileen, is it your understanding that the applicant for that application is actually going to renotice?
Yes. They're going to renotice. They've granted an extension of time for decision until June thirtieth, and we're going to put them on a different agenda, get everything tidied up, and they'll be coming back.
Great, thank you.
I should have checked my junk because at four o'clock this afternoon, I jumped in the car and went and took a look at the property. It was the property that I thought it was, but that's okay. Thank you. I'm going to solve that problem, Eileen. It's on my, it's it's for me to solve, right? Okay. The next case is Ying Li at eighty-one Mountain Avenue in Milburn.
Okay.
Is that case going forward tonight?
Yes, they are. I've been over Ying Li and, um, no, just her. Yes.
Hi.
Hi. Am I, am I, I'm, I'm muted, okay.
Now, this is shown as the applicant being Ying Li.
Yes, in this case, actually, yes, it's
This is actually your property?
Yes.
Okay. So let's swear the witness, can we?
Please raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so if you got in the matter, not pending?
Yes.
Yes, you may put it, may we have your full name spelled, please?
Ying, Y-I-N-G, Li, L-I.
Thank you.
Proceed.
The application is to enclose the existing porch, and the purpose of the renovation is to turn the existing screened porch into an office and a mudroom. So what it, it is, it has an existing non-conforming condition that has a combined side yard setback condition, the required combined side yard setback would be twenty feet and four inch, but the existing condition is only sixteen, it's only sixteen feet. The reason being is the lot is a lot narrower than what a typical R-five lot is. The R-five lot, a typical minimum width is seventy five, seventy five feet, and this one is basically fifty eight feet. Originally, I, basically, the idea of the whole renovation is not to trigger any variance, but the porch is in, it's rotted, it's in a, basically, it's dilapidated, it needs to be renovated, and then as long as the wall is taken down, variance is needed, even though it's a existing condition. So that's the first variance item. The second one is regarding lot coverage. Right now, it is existing non-conforming at thirty-nine percent due to the two-car garage all the way at the back of the lot. The driveway is the main, the main reason that makes the lot coverage existing high. And then right now, there's a retaining wall on the side of the house that's about a, varies between eight to ten feet wide, and it's, it's difficult to have a car to get by and then, and the neighboring, actually, this, the, the, the neighboring, the landscaping on the neighboring side right now is basically, it's, it's actually their bush, but to basically promote better health for the landscaping, for the bush, I think I would just basically widen the driveway by removing the retaining wall up to four, up to four feet to gain some room for the driveway. With that, it drives up the lot coverage one percent. Basically, it makes the existing non-conforming one percent worse.
Any questions of this witness? I have one question. I have one question. You indicated that this lot is narrower than the typical lot in the R-five district, is that correct?
Yes.
Can you put some numbers behind that?
This lot is, the width is fifty, fifty-eight point three-three, the lot, and that's the width, and the then the depth is two hundred and two. So it's basic, it's a narrow and long, it's narrow and deep lot. And when this house was designed and built, they put Center Hall Colonial facing this, facing the Pine Street, so with a porch, it's, it, yes, fifty-eight point three-three, to answer the question.
It appears the average R-five is seventy-five feet wide and one hundred and twenty-five feet deep.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, yes, one hundred and twenty-five is the minimum lot depth for R-five. Yes.
Any other questions for this witness?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Ms. Lee, did you, did you yourself prepare the plans that were submitted as part of this application?
Yes.
And so even though you are the applicant, you're also a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
And your license is not revoked or suspended and is currently active, correct?
Correct.
And you've testified before planning and zoning boards in the past as, as a licensed architect?
Yes.
And on those occasions, you were qualified as an expert witness?
Yes.
Even though it was for other applicants?
Yes, yes.
Thank, thank you.
And you've testified before this board as well, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I'm relatively new in this town as an architect, you know, you know, but, you know, I'm getting there.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions of this witness? All right, there are two variances that are required in this case that are required by the applicant. Together, rather than separate them, if that's okay. Is there a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think we have to open it up to the public for questions and or comments.
You're absolutely correct. I'm sorry.
I do not see any hands raised in the attendees. I do not see any questions.
No questions? Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this case?
No.
Okay, now, now I'll ask the question. Is there a motion in this case as to the two variances? And I will, I will lump them together.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the two variances.
Joy Segal makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Amy, seconds?
Clender?
Yes.
Joy Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yeah.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. See you some next month. All right, bye now.
Bye-bye.
Bye now, thanks.
All right, the next case is Lisa and Robert Dela Cruz at seventeen Woodland Road, and this is the request which relates to a proposed addition. It's actually a new garage. Mr. Clessy, you're the architect in this case, is that correct?
Are you?
Yes, I am, yes.
You want to give us the benefit of your experience, education, and the like?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and in New York, and have been licensed for approximately twenty-five years. I have a degree in architecture as well as a degree in interior design, and I've been practicing in short hills for probably about twenty years, and
Um, and I've been practicing in Short Hills for probably about twenty years and, um, my license is presently in good standing. I've appeared in front of this board on numerous occasions and, um, other boards in North Jersey as well as nationally.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Klessi, uh, good evening. Can you just, uh, raise your camera? Because there's a requirement that if you're gonna be providing, thank you.
I'm sorry. I didn't notice it.
I wanted everyone to know how handsome you actually are.
Thank you.
And how old you are.
The, uh, 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 so I'll be presenting tonight along with the Dela Cruzes and also we have a planner. Jessica Caldwell. I don't know if she's come in?
Yes, she has. All right, I'll bring her over.
Okay. And, um, I'll just give a little background to that. I originally wanted to get Rich Keller, um, but Rich is away on vacation. So, um, Rich recommended Jessica to, um, to me to help, uh, with this case. And I was concerned with this case because of, uh, it's a devariance case for FAR. Plus, uh, well, that's really the biggest issue that I was concerned about, and that's why I wanted to bring a planner along this evening. So without, um, going any further, I'd like to introduce the Dela Cruzes and have them start, who will then pass to me. And then I will send on to, um, Ms. Caldwell.
Let's have both of you raise your hands if you're both gonna testify. Right hand up. Mr. Fishman?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so if you got no matter not pending?
We do.
Yes.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, you have to keep your voice nice and loud, please?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And we have your full name, please?
I'm Robert Dela Cruz.
I'm Lisa Leung.
Well, I'm sorry, what?
I'm Lisa Leung.
Can you spell it, please?
L E U N G.
Lisa, come forward a little bit, Lisa.
Uh, you wanna, you wanna continue, start?
Yeah, so we appreciate you taking the time to hear our request to rebuild our garage. Um, we've lived in, at seventeen Woodland Road for the last seven years, uh, with our three children. Um, we've really enjoyed it and loved the neighborhood because our kids have so many friends nearby. It's really wonderful having a walkable neighborhood. I usually travel into New York, uh, for work. Uh, Lisa works at home, um, at, uh, Amgen, um, and I work for Google in New York. Um, you know, the existing garage, as we see it, like, needs to be rebuilt. It's really undersized. We cannot, we can't fit either one of our cars in the garage, um, because it's too short. We have a mid-sized SUV and a minivan. Um, it probably wasn't built very well, um, the original garage, because it's leaning to the side. Um, when we had the, uh, the building re-sided, it wasn't plum. And the foundation is cracking in the back, so we know we needed to rebuild it. And we wanted to build it correctly this time to ensure at least our cars can fit in there and we can get our cars out of the driveway and let the kids play in the driveway. Um, you know, earlier, well, last year, we were planning on moving to another home that we built in Long Hill Drive, um, that we also planned with Tim. Um, but COVID hit and we worried about just work and life in general, just like everyone else. And, uh, we sold it late, late last year. Um, so we decided to stay where we are. Um, we really like the neighborhood. Our children love the neighborhood. We have so many friends in the area. Um, but we really need an office space where, you know, I can work, she can work, um, in a quiet, private space. Um, right now, you know, kind of the dining room is my office, and so it's, you know, anyone who works in their kitchen knows it's chaos, right? Um, uh, especially when the kids come home, so it makes it really challenging. Um, and so we wanted to use the space above the garage, um, if we have the opportunity to rebuild it, uh, to house an office space and, you know, occasionally use it as a guest space for my wife's, um, parents. Um, when they visit us, where they could stay, you know, a handful of days a week, um, and have their own little, like, private space away from, uh, away from, you know, the, the, the rest of the household. Um, I'll pass it to Tim to explain our plan.
Okay, um, I can just share my screen, Eileen. Do I have a, okay. I think I did it. Did I do it?
No, we still see you.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna start with, um, a little bit of the area. This is the view of the house on Woodland.
We're not seeing.
We don't see anything, Tim.
You do?
You see nothing? All I see is, on my side is you, Eileen.
Oh, that's not so bad, is it?
No, no, it could be much worse. I could be looking at Joe, actually. Never mind.
Anything, we're just seeing the screen. I, I, I'm just seeing everybody. I don't see, no shared screen.
I'm gonna try to share again. Do you see my screen now?
No. Yes.
Okay, good, sorry.
Oh.
Okay, I'm gonna start with four photos, um, which are really new, so I guess I'd like to call them exhibits.
Tim, are we going to, uh, mark these as individual exhibits or just as one exhibit, A1 consisting of four photos? How do you want to do it?
I think A1 is four photos is adequate.
Okay, so this is gonna be marked for identification as A1. And I ask that, at the conclusion of the hearing, if you can provide these to Eileen?
I will. Thank you. Okay. Um, this is the view of the house on, from Woodland. This is the seventeen Woodland view. The, it's, um, sort of a narrow lot with a side street going down Wellington. Heavily full, a lot of foliage, foliage on the left side. And if I continue, turn the corner onto Wellington, the building now, the depth of the building with a small sort of breezeway attached so that the primary building is actually attached to the garage. And I'll just continue a little, a little further, and you can see a little more of the garage and how that breezeway is actually linked. Our plan is to leave the driveway, to leave this patio between the building and the garage, but to remove the garage, to enlarge it, and then to add a half-story above. This picture is really a shot of our house related to the neighbor's house. And, um, this is something that Jessica's gonna get into a little more about how we are a little depressed in height related to the size and scale of the neighbor. And you can see on the side yard here on the right side that we actually have a pretty good amount of room on that side. And I'll show it to you in plan.
Um, uh, Mr. Klessi, excuse me.
Yeah.
Can we just, can we just clarify in terms of the four photos that are marked as A1? Uh, did you take those photos?
Yes, I did.
And when did you take those photos?
Approximately two weeks ago.
So?
I would say March fifteenth.
March fifteenth?
Yes.
And they were taken by you, and do they accurately depict the condition of the, uh, structures and the property as shown in these photographs?
Yes, and I went by the site again today, and they depict the site as it is today.
Thank you, Mr. Klessi.
I'm gonna just go into my BOA sheets, and my BOA sheets are exactly the same as your BOA sheets. Yes, come in a little bit here.
Can you just identify what you're referring to for the record?
This is my, I'm on my sheet, BOA one, uh, and I think there's a total of four sheets in this set. Oh, no, there's only three sheets in the set. And, uh, I'm gonna start with my actual sheet, BOA one, which is exactly the same as these three BOA sheets that all of the board members have. And I'm gonna start first with the existing survey. On the bottom, you can see Woodland, and going up the sheet is Wellington. The primary dwelling, this little link, that patio space that I just showed you, that little paver patio area, and then the two-car garage. And where I'm gonna just say about thirteen feet off the property on this side and about nine, or, or, I gotta just say about nine feet off the rear property line. Then I'm gonna slide to the right now and go to my proposed site. And what we have done is we set off the right side property, property nine point oh five, and off the rear property, I set at eight on the, yeah, this corner, the most affected corner. Then that nine point two-two is actually to the second floor because I recessed the shed dormer on the second floor to get a little relief off the property line and to also make sure that I conform to the second floor height. Yeah, increase in height related to, um, the thirty-two feet. On the front, we've created a dormer to add a second floor area. I'm now gonna move on to my BOA two sheet. From. I'm now on my BOA two. And you can see the proposed first floor with the, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit to fix the line work. You can see the existing building, the proposed mudroom space, which I'm gonna say is about ninety square feet, and then the proposed garage coming to the right. And as I move over to the garage, you can see the existed, existing dotted line of the garage as well as our new building. So this area in there, and this area here, and that sliver across the back is where I added to the footprint of the garage in order to really make it large enough to fit two cars. And I would have liked to make the garage twenty-four by twenty-four, but this garage is twenty-two by twenty-two, and I held that because I wanted to keep it smaller on the site. That, um, allowed me to start at the same location where the existing patio was, so I could retain this existing patio and just construct a small mudroom. So you walk now into the mudroom, and then I can come and I walk up the stairs to the second floor or walk directly into the house. So we've been able to add a mudroom, add a full-size garage, and add access to the second floor with this scheme. If I continue on to the second floor, we came in and, um, I walk up the stairs and I produce the office space, which at this point is about fifteen by twenty, right? It's dormered in because I created that dormer in the front. This is sort of a low area. It's almost like the way a cape would be clipped on the second floor. Added a bathroom onto this side, really, um, for Lisa's parents, um, because they come from Queens and stay for a week now, um, see the kids. And then, uh, and Rob could use it actually, because Rob plans on using this otherwise as his office until his in-laws kick him out. The, um, if I come in and look at the building, I'm on my BOA three sheet now. You can see the dotted line of the existing building right there. And I've added this mudroom, added the stairway going up, you know, created a bigger link, and added a single car or a single door to the garage so that we could fit these cars in a little easier because the twenty-two feet is kind of tight, and, um, turned it into a carriage door. These walls that you can sort of see inside the building are actually the partitions of space where the space itself is inhabitable. And that's done so that we can create this scaled look in the building where I can bring this roof down. If I move to the back of the building, we have offset the ridge on the breezeway space so that I could get some glass into the clear story. And so that from my, the front, my building looks low, even though I added the stairway going up, trying to, just to scale down again the mass, really concerned with the FAR here. And then added the shed dormer onto the back and have pushed that shed dormer in off the rear elevation to again scale the building. If you look at it from the side, this would be really the, um, Wellington side looking down the end of the garage. You can see how I pushed the dormer back and let this roof come through to scale the building. Dormer, the rear, the dormer is recessed off the plane of the rear of the side elevation by a foot and a half so that it scales down. This is the roof itself coming down so that my building looks in scale. And then when I created the breezeway, this is how we configured the roof. And I configured the roof in this manner so that the building itself would look low in scale from the street because I'm trying to minimize the effect of the building. That's my portico, my mudroom space and my stairway going up. So I really only need the height in the building at the rear section. So that's what led me, I'm gonna just take you back to my elevation. That's how I can create this link without it being sort of visually massive on the building. And that is, um, really the balance of my application, the, I, I'd like to, I think, answer any questions or pass it on to Jessica, and then you can come back and ask everyone questions simultaneously.
I'd like to, I, let's do the questions now.
Okay.
Of the architect. Who has questions?
I just have one, um, on the application, on the zoning calculation from, I don't see the existing lot width and depth. Do you know what that is?
Um, you know, it's a corner lot, so it doesn't really have a width and depth, but
Or the dimensions of the lot?
Yeah, it's five thousand, let me just, it's five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two square feet. And the, I'm gonna say the width across the woodland side, you know, I just can't read it on my, it's, because now that I've gotten older, my eyesight is failing. But the width across the woodland side is fifty-six point eight oh, and the width across the Wellington side is a hundred. It's really about a, well, it's a hundred point four eight, but it sort of averages that to be a hundred and one in the midpoint. So it's kind of like a fifty by a hundred lot, really. The lot's a little undersized for the R six.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Uh, presently, there is, between this lot and the next house on Wellington, an area of grass and stones. Grass in the back, stones closer to the street. Under your proposal, what happens to that area of grass and stones?
Do you mean to the right of the garage, if I'm looking at?
Yes.
We've left it. We haven't touched it. Well, we encroached into it by
How far have you encroached into it? That's, that's what I was having problems with.
I, I can do it. We encroached into it four feet. And that was for me to take the garage that was eighteen and kick the garage up to twenty-two. And that was for me to take the garage that was eighteen and kick the garage up to twenty two. So we are setback off of the proposed garage. Is nine point oh five and we're actually required to be eight. But we're at, we conform to that. I, I mean, I would think the minimum garage you could do here would be twenty one feet wide, I guess, if you were. To shave it a little to add more space. After that, I, I don't think he can fit two cars.
Can you give us the dimensions of the existing driveway and of the new proposed driveway? On the Wellington side.
The existing driveway is six hundred square feet. And the proposed driveway is six hundred and ninety square feet.
Thank you.
Quick question. The, the mudroom area that you showed, which is sort of the connector between the house and the garage.
Yes.
Is that two story or is that with a high ceiling, just a single ground level story?
It's really like, I, I'm gonna say it's a story and a half. And the best place to see it is. On this, on my sheet B O A three, building section A A, which I am, I've just put on the screen. It is two stories in the rear section. And I did that so that I could get the stairway up to get the second floor. However, from the street, it would read as one story. So I guess I'm gonna say it's a story and a half. And I'm gonna just let you look at it and. If you look at the front elevation. See how it just appears to be roof on the front. Similar to the new building or similar to the existing building roof. But if I go to the rear, I was able to put this glass into the rear so I could get some light into the mudroom. Because I actually had to bring it up. And we've drawn a line that I'm following right now. That line is the six foot eight dimension that's required for the stairway. So we have set this height at the point that's the minimum for the stairway that we're bringing from the. Mudroom up to the second floor. I, I don't know if you can see all this on the drawing, but I can see that we're running the stairway. And we are showing that line parallel to the stairway intersecting the bottom of the rafter. That's how we really set that. But if you look at it in section, it would look exactly as shown. It made that building, I can see that we've put a dimension on it, but I can't read it. But that building is. I think it's thirteen. It's back here, it's in the rear there, it's thirteen foot eleven to fit the stairway. But in the front. It's only, you know. Seven foot four high, right? And that was what I was trying to do so that if you look at the partial front elevation, so that I could. Minimize the look of the building from the streetscape.
Got you. Is that what is impacting your second floor? In the proposed floor area, the two forty that you have added, this is on page number fourteen. Is that, it just kind of, is that increasing your floor area ratio?
Yes, yes. Our floor area. On this site is existing at forty point eight percent. And between the added floor area for the first floor. The added floor area for the mudroom, because the breezeway really had no wall, so it wasn't counted before. But for the added, for those two things and for the added for the second floor above the garage. We're at forty eight percent. So we have gone up seven point two percent in floor area on this site. And our. Building coverage went up, you know, three point two percent.
Thank you.
We can come back to me if you would like.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Mr. Classy. Based on your testimony and the proposed uses of the space above the garage. Can you confirm that the applicants are not intending to. Rent that space out to a third party for any reason?
Yes, the, the applicant is, is not planning on renting the space, really an office space for Rob. Which could double as a place for his in-laws when they come and kick him out of his office.
Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness? Any other witnesses? Does anyone in the audience have a question of this witness?
I believe there are two people that have questions, but I, I, I need Tim to. Unshare his.
Stop sharing.
Yeah. Yeah, I have, yike, I, I don't know how to pronounce the last, the last name is Q I believe she lives next door, so I think she has a question. I don't know if she has a question or a comment, we'll find out in a minute.
We still have a planner to testify also.
Oh, that we, we do want questions of the architect. This is a time when we're asking for questions only, not statements.
Well, I will bring her over and we will see if she has a question for you. Yes, you're up.
Okay, oh, got it. Yes. Okay, yeah, so basically my question is, uh, actually our house is very close already. If they shifted like to westbound to our house. I think it would be like even closer. And there was more, we have. Only very, very small tiny like garage. And we also have a very small office on, on top of it. But if it is too close and I'm not sure whether it'll get our like only window on the office locked. Yeah, so that is one of my questions. And the second one is. If you have a like a double garage, right, already. It is a double space so for our garage space. So if you wanted to make it larger, so why not maybe it's a better idea, you so shift to your garage like. Used to word, I mean to tear down the connection part and the maybe it's close to against your house altogether. So in this way, maybe it'll save some spaces, right? And not make the. Office close to each other. Yeah, that is what I'm thinking, yeah.
You mean like make the breezeway?
Yeah, that's right. Right, and if you need some like space and there's a bridge way. If you get them removed and the shift to the garage, used to word, right? And against your house, our garage is adjusted zero space between the garage and the, and our house, no bridge way at all. So in this way, there, there will be a lot of space saved. And, and actually don't have to like to move our office too close to each other. And the block the window of our like office. That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
You're on, you're on Wellington, correct?
Yeah, exactly. Six two, yeah, just as a neighbor.
Yes, I, I mean, it's true, we could shorten the length of the breezeway. We left the breezeway the length that it was because. We left the patio, the size that it was between the house and the existing garage. But it is true that we could slide this garage to the left by. Two or three feet and make that patio width smaller. The, it's not a violation right now where we are, we actually conform on that. But if we did slide in that direction, that would have the benefit of lowering the building coverage. And also would lower the, well, it would lower the F A R because the building itself got smaller. So yes, we, we could do that.
Yeah.
The, your house, that side of your house is actually facing east.
Yeah, definitely, there is the windows, it seems is.
So I, I don't think it's really a light issue. Much with you, but it is true that we could get further from the property line by shortening the breezeway. Right? We had not done that, but we could do that. We could leave the, we could, yes, we could do that.
Yeah, so just wanted to keep a little bit of space like between our two houses. Otherwise, it's already close, very close to each other. So if you could look, double check that part, yeah, so if you keep, to keep the, you step on the side of the line, the boundary. And use some more space like of the connection. So that would be easier, yeah, actually. And there was more, yes. Our like a garage is adjusted like maybe half of the current garage already, yeah, so. I'm not sure, yeah, so you really need that to, that the garage, yeah. So just wanna keep a little bit of space and not affect the sunshine to.
Excuse me, I'm. Speaking, I'm gonna interrupt here, this is only the time for questions.
Okay.
And you've asked your question.
Yeah, so that's a smart question, yeah. So whether it'll affect our.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has a question to ask this witness?
I see no other hands.
Are there any other witnesses in this case for the applicant?
I believe their planner. Correct?
Yes.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name's Jessica Caldwell. I'm a professional planner for the applicant.
Did we swear? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so if you got no matter enough, any?
Yes, I do.
And once again, please state your full name and spell it.
Jessica Caldwell, C A L D W E L L.
Thank you.
Do you want to give us the benefit of your education, your experience as a planner?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Chair. I have a master's degree in urban and regional planning from Portland State University. And a bachelor's degree in planning, public policy and management from the University of Oregon. I've been a practicing planner for over twenty years. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have a planning practice in New Jersey where I represent several municipalities. I've also testified before over two hundred boards in the state of New Jersey and been accepted as an expert in planning. I have not testified before Melbourne zoning board, but I have testified in Florham Park. Madison, Berkeley Heights, Westfield and Summit are some of the nearby communities where I've been accept, accepted as a professional.
Your license in good standing is.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I have an exhibit that I would like to share. First of all, I'd like to review the variances that we're requesting. So the first one is, and this is just from the package, our. Our application package, page ten, that I'm referring to, shows the variances that we are requesting. We have a front yard setback that's pre-existing non-conforming at fourteen point seven one feet, where forty feet is required. We are encroaching into that setback to twenty six and a half feet with the addition in the front of the garage. For building coverage, we're existing at twenty three point eight percent, which is just slightly over the twenty three percent permitted. That is going up to twenty seven percent. So that's the variance that we're requesting. And then the floor area ratio variance that we've been discussing, we're at forty eight, forty point eight percent now. Where thirty six percent is permitted as a maximum and we're requesting forty eight percent. Just gonna work on getting one other. Exhibit here for you. So this is an exhibit that I prepared. Mr. Simon, would you like this marked?
Sure. Hi, Jessica. Why don't we mark this as exhibit A two?
Okay.
And if you can just identify it for the record, please. And, and again, as I stated to Mr. Classy, that at the end of the hearing, if you would provide a copy of it to Ms. David.
Yes, absolutely. This is an exhibit I prepared. It has an aerial photo from Google Maps. And then it also has some photos of the subject property and a couple of the surrounding properties. That I, I took with the exception of one photo, which is from Google Street View that I added in to show. One street frontage, but I'll discuss this, three sheets in total. And that'll be exhibit A two is prepared by myself, April fifth, two thousand twenty one. So on the first page of the photo is the aerial view, you can see the subject property here in the center. It is a corner lot, it fronts on Wellington Avenue as well as Woodland Road. You can see that despite we have two pre-existing non-conforming front yard setbacks. The one that we're encroaching in slightly is here along Wellington Avenue. You can see how the garage is set back from the existing encroachment just slightly. And it'll still be behind the existing encroachment of the front house, front of the house. But still generally in keeping with the neighborhood in terms of. How the houses, front yard setbacks flow along Wellington Avenue on that side. And you can also see the corner lot along Woodland Road and the properties adjacent. On to this, this property as well. So the houses in the area for. This particular neighborhood were all built around the nineteen thirties, according to tax records. House sizes typically are over twenty two hundred square feet. Most of the houses have attached garages and most of the houses have a half to full story developed over the garage. And most of the houses typically are two and a half stories in height with garages at one and a half stories in height. As you can see, the lot is a corner lot. And because there's a corner lot, it has two front yards and two side yards. The front yards are located along. The front yards are located along Woodland Avenue and Wellington Avenue, Woodland Road and Wellington Avenue. So the entrance to the house you saw earlier, and I'll show you the frontage, is along Woodland Road. So it really splits up being a corner lot. You have views to the house. Rather than a typical interior lot, has one view and the plane of the entrance to the house and the garage is all in sort of one view. This lot, because it's split on the corner, you have the front door and the frontage along Woodland Road. And then you have Wellington Avenue is the other frontage that you see, and this is the view that you see of the side of the house and the garage.
And Jessica, you're now showing photographs on sheet two of three of A2?
Yes.
And these are photos that you all took, you took yourself?
Yes.
And when were they taken approximately?
April 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the corner lot allows for this visual plane of the building to be split. Additionally, from the road, the lack of the rear yard, because you have two side yards behind the property. I'll just go back up to sheet one. And you see there's a side yard and a side yard instead of a rear yard behind the property. So from the street frontage, the lot actually looks much larger than it is because most of the yard that you see is in front and in the public realm, so to speak, adjacent to the road. The garage is proposed to be expanded into the two side yards as was discussed earlier by Mr. Klessi. And in terms of the surrounding area, the lots range in size from 5,500 to around 8,000 square feet. An average lot size is around 7,200 square feet. This is in the R6 zone where the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. This particular lot is slightly undersized for the zone at 5,732 square feet. So for instance, because we have this corner lot and these two side yards, if the requirement for the zone is to have 25% of the lot is a rear yard, if you're not in a corner lot. If you added a 25% of the 5,732 square foot lot, you would be around 7,200 square feet, which would be about the average lot size for the area. So while the lot, while it is small, and it is one of the smaller lots in the area within 200 feet, it does appear from the frontage to be of similar size to the average 7,200 square foot lot. Let's see here, let's scroll down to the second set of photos on sheet two. What I think is important about this application, and one thing that really makes it fit, is that you have this low garage here, which is atypical for the neighborhood. So this shows adjacent lot 62 Wellington Avenue. And the other aspect is this lot, there's actually upward slope in between these two lots. So you can see that this house, the plane of this house is higher than our existing. And the garage itself too, where you have the one and a half story adjacent garage on 62 Wellington, is higher than this existing garage. So the proposal would really be to bring it up into conformance or uniformity with adjacent properties where you have this typical one and a half story garage. This is 21 Wellington Avenue to the right of that photo, it's the bottom right corner of sheet two, where it shows a one and a half story two-car garage similar to what's being proposed. That's directly across the street. So this is typical either, this one actually has a breezeway similar as to is proposed on the subject property. And then many of the garages are actually attached directly to the residences as well. Scrolling down to sheet three of A2, on the top left corner is 21 Wellington Avenue, which is the house that's directly across the street and goes with that garage, one and a half story garage that I just showed. The second sheet, photo on the upper right-hand corner shows residences east on Wellington Avenue, and you can see these one and a half story garages as you go up the street. And also you can see the similar bulk and size and character of the structures in the neighborhood. And this is going south along Woodland Road as similar where you have the one and a half story garage sections and the similar bulk and size of the properties. And you can see particularly on this adjacent property on Woodland Road, how you have the entire plane of the house on one street as being an interior lot.
So Jessica, I'm sorry I'm interrupting you. The last photo where you have the caption underneath residences south along Woodland Road, was that the photo that you did not take?
Yes, this photo I got from Google Street View, but I can confirm that it is accurate as I was out in the area, but I just wanted to be able to show these properties and I didn't get a photo of it.
Okay, thank you. Do you know approximately when that photo, the Google image photo was taken?
I think it was 2021 is what it said on the on the site when I was downloading them.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe the D criteria really addresses the variances that we're seeking. Because with respect to the front yard, we're not encroaching further into the front yard than existing for this encroachment. And with respect to the building coverage, it's really linked into the floor area ratio with respective to a control that's looking to control the size and the bulk of the property. So I believe that D variance criteria that I'm going to address for floor area ratio would apply to those as well. So the courts have held that a D4 floor area ratio variance is similar to a D3 conditional use variance. So that the board's focus must be on whether the site will accommodate the problems associated with the proposed use, given that the proposal has a larger floor area than permitted by the ordinance. That was upheld in Randolph Town Center v Randolph, holding that the standard enunciated in Coventry Square v Westwood Board of Adjustment, which pertains to D3 conditional use variances, would apply also to D4 floor area ratio variances. So that an applicant for a D4 floor area ratio variance may not show the property as particularly suited for more intensive development, but in this case show potential problems, which might be negative impacts on the neighbors and the bulk of the building, such as blocking of light. So an important factor in floor area ratio variances is the scale of the structure and whether it fits in with the surrounding residences. In this case, crowding or how the area will appear after the new structure is built is also important. And the board also needs to look at the negative criteria, which is the two-pronged negative criteria, that there will be no substantial detriment to the public good and no substantial impairment to the zone plan and ordinances. Under the Randolph Town Center rationale, the board's focus regarding the negative criteria in a D4 or area ratio variance identical to conditional use variance case. And also in terms of the negative criteria, do not need to show the higher standard of the Medici case in terms of the negative criteria. So in terms of the positive criteria, and whether or not the lot can handle the additional development, what I've put forward in terms of, I'm going to scroll back to the first page of Exhibit A2 and the Google Maps, that you have this corner lot with this large frontage that makes the lot appear to be larger than it is. And therefore absorbs that additional floor area ratio with the house that's a similar size. And even though the lot is smaller, it doesn't negatively impact visually to the neighborhood. Secondly, with respect to the adjacent property, we have this raise in slope from the subject property to Lot 5, Block 1804, where, and the garage is also much lower than the surrounding neighborhood garages, such that making this garage one and a half stories and bringing it up doesn't negatively impact the neighbor from a height perspective, because it would bring it into similar height, even lower height. But also makes the garage more conforming from a visual perspective to the neighborhood where the bulk of garages are one and a half stories with some type of finished space over the garage. Also, with respect to the positive criteria, we look to the purposes of municipal land use law. On purpose A, which is the general welfare clause. And we discussed the proposal to allow two cars to be parked in the garage. I believe that this reduces the need for on-street parking in the neighborhood, which is a benefit to the neighborhood where you're adding additional off-street parking spaces. Also, purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment. The proposal will bring the garage more into visual compatibility with surrounding residences where the typical garage is attached and finished, there's finished space over the garage. I reviewed the Melbourne Township Master Plan with respect to the 2008 Master Plan Reexamination Report. And I believe that one of the goals and objectives is forwarded by this proposal to encourage appropriate land uses that promote the character of the township as a small suburb of the highest quality. An objective 1.01, which is to protect the character of established residential neighborhoods and encourage land use and development at an appropriate scale and density. The proposal improves an existing residence that provides a benefit to the community and is in keeping with the established character of the existing neighborhood. Now, with respect to the negative criteria, as I mentioned, we must show that there's no substantial detriment to the public good and no substantial impairment of the zone plan and ordinances. There's several reasons why I feel that there is no substantial detriment to the public good. The proposed garage additions in keeping with surrounding residences. The proposal does not increase any existing setback, non-conformities. And with respect to the side yards where it is encroaching further, the side yards still meet the minimum of eight feet. The lot slopes away from neighboring properties and therefore the increase in building coverage won't negatively impact adjacent properties. Visually, the proposed development will be in keeping with the neighborhood. And the proposed addition will increase off-street parking on the site and reduce the need on-street parking in the neighborhood. In terms of substantial detriment to the zone plan or impairment of the zone plan and ordinances, the proposals in keeping with the character of the area and the site and circumstances are unique to permit bulk and floor ratio variances without impairment to the zone plan or ordinances. I also feel, as I mentioned before, that it does promote goal one and objective 101 of the latest Master Plan Reexamination Report. And that concludes my direct testimony. I'd be happy to take any questions from the board and public.
Mr. Steinberg, you're muted. Are there any questions from board members of this witness?
I just, Ms. Caldwell, you know, you made several references to eliminating or reducing on-street parking. Are you aware that on-street parking is not permitted overnight in the area?
Yes, I mean during the day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of this witness from board members? Anyone in the audience have a question? Questions only now for this witness, the planner, Ms. Caldwell. Anyone?
No, I see no hands raised.
Okay. Any other witnesses?
No, that's our entire application. I don't know if, Rob, you have anything to add that you'd like to add? The, I mean, I think we could actually make some reductions to the building if if that's would make sense. Like I could cut a foot off of the building itself and cut two feet off the link, which would allow me to pick up 50 square feet of building coverage and about 60 square feet of FAR. And I, it seems like we could do that and maybe address the neighbor's concern and maybe give us a little bit of a a better application moving forward to the board.
Are you, are you asking for a deferment of the board's consideration of this matter?
Say that again for me, please, Joe.
I said, are you asking for the board to defer this matter to another day?
I don't think so. I think, no, I don't think so. I guess I'm offering that we could remove 50 square feet of building coverage and I mean 40 square feet of building coverage and 50 square feet of FAR. That's what I'm, I'm offering. I'm looking at my client, trying to see if he has any comment, but I can't lean over and talk to him.
Yeah, I, look, I, I would say, you know, we are really trying to rebuild that garage to accommodate the cars. I think we've, Tim has helped us create a thoughtful plan around kind of the usage, I think.
Mr. Coach, can you speak louder, please?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. You know, Tim has helped us create that thoughtful plan and kind of minimizing kind of the impact for the neighbors and the neighborhood and allows us to stay in the neighborhood. And so, you know, we, we, we hope that we showed that today. I think if there are concerns, would love to kind of hear the concerns and if that's the case, you know, work with the board to address them. But hopefully, the plan as is makes sense.
Okay, I think that we should proceed to hear any comments that we have from the audience before the board deliberates on this matter. So is there anyone in the audience who would like to be heard on this case? Comments now, not questions.
I'm bringing over the adjoining property owner that was just.
All right, yeah, so.
He's going to have to be smart, right?
Mr. Mr., do you have a camera that you can be seen?
Let me have a try. Okay, so how can I turn this on? Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, hold on.
Let's raise your right hand, please.
Right on.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so if you got in a matter now pending?
Sure, I swear to tell the truth.
Yes, of course, yeah. Thank you. And would you speak slowly, please? Appreciate it. May we have your full name, please, and spell it?
Yeah. Y I K E, Yikko. And my third name is Q I, Qi.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can you just provide your address, please, for the record?
Of course, 62 Wellington Avenue, Shaw Hill. And the 07078.
Is your house immediately adjacent to the garage of the applicant?
Yeah, so facilities are still about like office of our house. Yeah, may I continue?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Okay, yes, so basically, as you can see from the look of the Google map, the, the space between our houses is already not so large. So, yeah, I understand that their garage currently is very low. If not able to like a block over live, but after building the second floor and add heat. And if they expand that they are like garage to the westward, that, that means to make the space vanished. I guess the sunshine will be blocked. So that is the problem, it's a basic concern we are facing, so. If possible, if they could like, like shorten the linkage, that part and move the garage like to the used to bond, that would be very helpful. Yeah, so that is the only thing likely in my hand, in my hand. Yeah, the space between us, I hope, if possible, just to keep it or don't encroach it too much. That's it.
Anyone else in the audience have a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this case? Anyone else there?
There are none.
All right, board members, can I hear where you guys stand on this case? And remember that the FAR council, do you want to advise the board members as to? The voting is with respect to the FAR variance as opposed to the other two?
And just to remind the board that for the FAR variance, it is a, as they call it, a D variance, D4 variance. And that requires five affirmative votes from this board for approval. The other, the other two variances, I believe, are C variances and not necessarily subsumed. Into the, the D4 variance.
So those, those can be granted by a simple maturity. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's my position.
Thank you. Board members, anyone want to kick off this discussion?
I will. You know, generally speaking, I'm, I'm in favor of the application, especially if. It can be, you know, moved closer to the main residence and the mudroom made a little smaller, but what I would like to propose is we have. A stipulation in the record that future owners of the home would not be able to rent out. That suite essentially, if possible.
Who's going to enforce that?
Well, if it's in the record, then it's, it's in the record and then if, if somebody has an issue with it. Or it takes the time to go and look it up, they can find that kind of.
Well, it's permit, it's prohibited by ordinance currently, so it.
Okay.
It, it would not be. Well, I shouldn't say that. I don't know if they decided to do like a B and B, an Airbnb or something. I don't know.
Right.
You know, I see what you're saying.
Kind of language in the, in the approval, if it's approved.
So following what Steve said, there's a couple of things I see with an issue here. Of course, the FAR, it's a huge deviation, you know, yes, I realize the house is currently not compliant. But then to take it to the next level here is, is rather substantial. So you're, you're, you know, the house is 4.8% over as it sits, but then we're going to take it all up to 12%. So it's, it's a big deviation. The other thing is, you know, rebuilding a garage is one thing, adding a second floor to it's quite another. You know, if the garage is dilapidated, needs to be rebuilt, well, that can be accommodated, but I'm not sure developing on top of it is necessary. And I, maybe I'm more pessimistic, but as far as I'm concerned, it's a guest house. And you could rent that out and, you know, it's going to be up to someone to catch them, but. You know, maybe these people do not have the intention of doing so, but, you know, our decision runs with the land. So down the road, it's very easy to do it and mask it as relative, whatever you want to do. But you could essentially turn that into a guest house or a rental property. So, and the other thing is, driving around the neighborhood, I don't see any separate two-car garages that are developed on top. You know, maybe a one-car garage, it's included with the massing of the house. But I don't see separate two-car garages with a full living quarters above them.
Let me just throw in here that I'm opposed to the FAR variance. I think it's entirely too great, 12%, where 36% is the maximum in the zone. We're talking about a one-third deviation, which to my mind is far beyond any reasonable. Request, plus the fact that I went to the property myself and looked at that property. And it seemed to me that the plans, as I understood them, would. Bulk up this property to the point that it would really have a negative effect on the property immediately to the right. And it's one thing for Mr. Klessi to say, we could do this, we could do that. I'd want to see it. I'd want to see this. Request reduced substantially. Anyway, anyone else? Yes, Mr. Klessi.
I, I think it may be good if we could just continue our case and come back, take a look at everything, come back.
You're asking for an adjournment?
I, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I'm kind of looking to see if my client is nodding his head in agreement.
Yeah, that would be okay.
Yeah.
He says it would be okay. Board members, are you in favor of granting an adjournment if one is requested? Yes, he's nodding his head up and down. So is Joy, so is Joe.
Okay.
Yes.
And Amy as well. So there's been a request for an adjournment of this matter to a later date. To be determined between the applicant.
We'll have to carry it.
Pardon me?
We'll have to announce the date tonight to carry it.
Yes, that's true.
Do you envision this will take on the amount of time?
No, no.
I think so.
No. I, I think we're just going to give us a chance to scale the plans down. Submit them 10 days before the hearing and then come in for the hearing.
And we can do it May 3rd.
Okay.
But this matter will be carried to May 3, 2021. Meeting of the Board of Adjustment, no additional notice or publication is required of the applicant.
Eileen, are we okay in terms of time?
Deadline to decide, May 4th, so we're good.
And we're talking about May 3, right?
May 3, okay. Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to take the time.
Tim, you can stay because I think you're next anyway.
I know, it's bad.
Mr. Steinberg, Mr. Steinberg, the court reporter, I need a minute to get up.
Yes. Take your time.
And who am I bringing over? I don't see.
Kamel S.
KP?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that who it is? Okay.
Yeah.
Just that one person?
Yes, I think he's sitting with his wife.
Okay. Oh, no, wait, wait, I think I brought the wrong person over.
Let me see.
I, there's Pretty and Kamal, and then I.
Yes, Kamal.
Okay, I don't know who this is, we gotta send one back. It's this KP person, we are, but.
Okay. I'm back.
You're back, okay. Next case on the agenda is calendar 3785-2193. Addison Drive, Pretty and Kamal Singh.
I mean, it's impossible.
These folks here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, they're in.
Who's going to testify first?
The Sings.
Raise your right hand, you have to be sworn now.
You swear to, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got a matter now pending?
Yes.
I do.
All right, who's going to be testifying now? Mister?
Hi. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks for taking the time to, to hear our request.
Yeah, okay. Would you give us your full name, please, and spell it, sir?
Sure. My full name is Kamal Preet and my last name is Singh, S I N G H.
Can we spell your first name?
It's a K as in Kansas, A as in Apple, M as in Mary, A as in Apple, L as in Larry, P as in Pennsylvania. R as in Russia, E as an elephant, E as an elephant again, and T as in Texas.
And your last name?
Singh as in singer-song, and then there's an H at the end, S I N G H.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
First of all, thank you so much for taking the time.
I, I thought it was Mister that was going to be tested.
She, she wants to say something first, if it's okay with you?
Okay, but, yeah.
Okay, you can say it. All right, so.
I need your.
Wait, 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 wait. Listen to the court reporter, please.
We need Mrs. Name, please, and we have your name?
My name is Sukpreet Kar.
All right, spell your name, please.
S as in Sam, U as in umbrella, K as in Kansas, H as in horse, P as in Pennsylvania. R is in Russia, E as an elephant, E as an elephant again, T as in Tom. And my last name is Kar, K A U R.
Okay, and please speak slowly.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we have two young kids, 10 and 6 years old. We used to live in Jersey City. But we have moved to suburbs because we wanted more space, lots of greenery and good schools. We looked around at the towns too, but we really liked short hills and especially the feel of the poet's section. We bought our house about four years ago and have loved living here since day one.
Yeah, so while we've been here, my personal parents have visited us a couple of times from India. They used to love going out for walks here. My father had a progressive disease and he passed away recently. My mom would like to visit us and stay with us for a couple of months stretch, basically typically every year she would love to do that. Basically to see her grandkids. Also, Pretty's parents, they are also, you know. Old and they would also love to visit us and spend more time with the kids, so we felt that we needed to have a bedroom on the first floor. Because they have difficulty climbing stairs. So we wanted to come up with a plan to build a ground floor bedroom and an attached bath. But at the same time, wanted to protect the neighborhood feel of the poet's section, you know, that attracted us in the first place. We had seen a house, 106 Tennyson Drive, it's a blue colored house, it's like a couple of houses down the street from us. And really liked the aesthetic of that house. When a friend of ours told us that Tim had worked on that house, we reached out to him and asked him to put our design together. We've had discussions with our neighbors and addressed their concerns. I'd like Tim to, I guess, walk you through our plans.
Okay, can, can you hear me, Eileen?
Yes.
Everybody can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I would, I guess, like to share again.
Has Mr. Klessi been sworn?
Sorry, I'm sorry. No, I haven't, I'm sorry.
Mr. Fishman, let's swear again.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so have you got a matter now pending?
I do.
Thank you.
I'm afraid you have to give us your.
May we have your full name, sir, please, and spell it?
Timothy, T I M O T H Y, Klessi, K L E S S E. I am a licensed architect in New York and New Jersey and have been licensed for approximately 20 years. I work in town and have appeared in front of this board on numerous occasions, as well as other boards throughout the state. And my license is presently in good standing. And I would like the board to accept my qualifications.
They're accepted.
Thank you. Eileen, do you have to make it possible for me to share the screen?
No, everyone has.
I got it, I got it, nevermind.
Everybody has.
Okay. I just have a lot of trouble sometimes with this computer sharing the screen. I guess I again would like to start. With the photos, just to give everyone an idea of what's going on, the.
So, Mr. Klessi, are you about to introduce or mark for identification? Various photos that were not submitted as part of your application package?
Yes, and I have. Five photos and I also, I guess I'd like to make that A1.
So that it's going to be a five photo set that we're going to mark A1 for identification. Sheets one through five, representing the five photos, correct?
Yes.
And these photos that you took, Mr. Klessi?
Yes.
And when did you take them?
I took them. Approximately a month ago.
Say March 5?
March, yes, March 5.
And do they accurately depict the condition or the view of the property from those various locations at the time that were, the photos were taken?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Klessi.
I also am going to have another exhibit, would you like to?
Well, let's get to, we'll get to that later.
Okay. Let's start with. Our, our case this evening is really. My site, which is on the right side here, it's 93 Addison.
Which, which photo are you showing the board for the reference?
What I, I call the adjacent, I, I guess, I guess I'll say the left side. Of the, the left side and neighbor of the existing residence photo. And my site is actually at 93 Addison. It's really in our five zone in the, in the poet's section. The addition that we're proposing this evening is to the left side of this existing building. And I talked about our building, I'm talking about this building with the brick facade. We are asking tonight to come to the left five feet closer to this left side property line. And then we are sort of bringing a addition down the back until we hit the rear of the building. Okay, that's really where this addition is going. And I like this photo because it's a pretty good description of what's going on. There's approximately 45 feet from, or I'm sorry, 50 feet from this brick corner of our building. To the brick. this brick corner of our building to the brick corner of the garage extension on the neighbor's next door, so in that area we got approximately fifty feet. After our addition would go in, we're about five feet, so the there'd still be approximately forty five feet from our addition in the rear back here by the back of the property to the neighbor's building is approximately thirty five feet, okay? The neighbor's site has the driveway, basketball court, this paved area, and, you know, really the driveway and the garage. So that's where our proposal is this evening to add on. I'm gonna just move on, and I have another photo of that same area, just to give you an idea of the planting that's occurring. Where this AC unit is presently located is approximately five feet off the face of the building. So that's where we're talking about extending our building to. I don't know if you had a chance to get out there and saw the stakes that I put in the ground for this property, but I staked it so you could get an idea of of where our proposed building was going. And that, and I want you to see when we get to the rear of the of our existing building, that there's a raised deck. Another portion of this application is to lower, remove this deck and create a patio and actually increase the setback in this area, also with a patio, which is kind of a little, I would say, less obtrusive to the neighborhood because it won't be two feet off the ground with a five foot handrail. It would be a patio that's actually on grade, so less less visually imposing to the neighborhood. This is a photo of the front of the existing house, as you can see, it's really a, you know, a split, side split, as is similar to a lot of the houses in the poet's section. The site itself has a big radius, front yard shows much more front yard than rear yard. My rear property, the garage or the driveway comes around to the back and the cars are loaded to the rear of the property. We have small work going on in this area on the right side, but really no other work proposed. This is in some ways a kind of a good solution to this site because it's not a tear down in this neighborhood. It's really a relatively small alteration. Additionally, I have another exhibit, which I'll call Exhibit Two or A two, and that is an exhibit of the neighbor's survey that I just wanted to show. We've spoken extensively with the neighbor who's immediately to the left and also the neighbor across the street, and I'm not sure if they're on tonight or not, but to the best of our knowledge, we've made agreements with them that everyone is comfortable with the proposal that we made this evening. And part of that agreement is the relocation of the air conditioners, even though the air conditioners are in presently conforming locations. So I'd like to put up my Exhibit Two, which is a photo of the neighbor's survey that I took on, I think, April first or April second. And you can see our house.
Okay, hold on a second.
Yes.
Mister Klessy, because this is a photo of a survey, and you have to indulge the board for a second. Can you please describe what this A two consists of in terms of whose property it is and where the property is located and how how you got the survey?
Then this is a photograph that I took of the neighbor's property at eighty seven Addison Drive. They are the, what I'm gonna say, the most affected neighbor, the neighbor immediately to the left, and this survey, I think, is interesting because it shows the relative relationship of the two houses, and I know it's a little more accurate than the indications that I show on my BOA sheet, which will be the next one that I will go to after this, because when the neighbor showed me his survey, I realized that our house was actually located on the neighbor's survey. And I just wanted, yes.
So can you just identify, first of all, the date of this survey?
No, I honestly don't know, this was their title survey was when, from when the neighbor moved in, but the neighbor may be here this evening and could give us more information on.
You can enlarge that, Tim. You can enlarge it, it should be, you should be able to enlarge it right up top. See, you should be able to go over to the left. Now, you see the magnifying glass right there?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank.
You should be able to scroll down it, yeah, it should, and if you scroll down, the date should be on the bottom there, it might give you an idea. Then scroll down to the bottom of the survey. There you go.
Nice, oh, it's cut.
Nice.
Nice.
Can you go even if you, yeah, okay.
I don't.
Um.
I I could ignore the survey for now because I have the building located on my on my drawing, I just thought it was an interesting survey to understand the connection or the relationship of the two homes.
Yeah.
For the purpose of tonight. And I'd like to take you now to to my BOA sheets, which are exactly the same as your BOA sheets. On my survey, you can see the existing one and a half story building or proposed five foot extension, and I've located the neighbor's house on the survey with the neighbor's driveway, which was actually located on my survey. Then we are adding to the right approximately five feet and sort of putting an addition down the side, adding to the family room in the back and then creating the patio at the rear of the property. This is a, to the right is a photo, the same photo as I showed before of me trying to explain to you the large expanse of area between the two properties, and this is really occurring because the street is on a radius at this point. If I go to my BOA two sheet, you can see the end of the existing building running right there. And we have added on five feet to the left for about sixteen feet. Then we come down, come in about a foot, add on another five and a half feet to fit that bathroom, come back two feet, came down, and the closest point on our property or the closest point we are to the property line is right there at that point. Then the proposed patio is starting for us at this point, whereas the existing deck is approximately two feet off the property line. And we are ending with our patio at the exact same location as the existing deck ended, although our patio is really on the ground, you know, and the deck is up, let's say, two feet as well as the handrail. So this story for tonight is really about this sort of small addition that we're putting in on the left side, as well as a series of small interior changes, which really don't have anything to do with the board itself. If I, let's see what else I got. I'm gonna move on to my next sheet, and I come to my second floor, and we have really left all of this as really a one story building, and then we took and added on this sort of clear story height space into that family room that we did. That is the edge of my existing building. Here I'm out about a foot and a half, and I've extended into the backyard approximately six feet. It's really a, just to create a two story volume to the space. If I come to my elevations.
What sheet is this, Mister Klessy?
This is mine, should be mine, let me see. This is my BOA three sheet.
Thank you.
Oops, I'm sorry. This is my BOA four sheet. And my existing building is ending right on that plane. I've added five feet to the left as a one story element, and then back approximately twenty feet from the face of the building here, I've added this two story piece. You can, if I now walk down the left side of the property, there's that sixteen, the five, and then there is that two story element that's been pushed back into the building. In addition to that, we're adding a master bedroom suite in this area above the existing living room, kind of dining room, renovating a, this really re-roofing the building in this area. If I go to my final sheet, I don't know, I thought I had one. I have one, oh, I I got to my final, my final sheet, simply a rear elevation of the building. This is that new master bedroom suite, and this is that two story space, which is really the family room. That will complete my drawings, I'd like to take you to the actual appli, the application. If I go to schedule, you know, my schedule E, which I think is page ten, yes. Right, we really tonight require variances for, I'm just trying to get my paper. For the the first variance is really for the accessory structure in the rear, and that is the existing as a deck at two point eight feet, and our proposal, does anybody else have a lot of feedback, or is that just me? Eileen, do you get feedback or no?
No, I'm not getting any problems.
Okay. So the existing deck is at two point eight feet, our proposed patio is at four point eight seven, and required is twelve, our deviation is seven point one three feet, but it's an improvement of, you know, two feet over what's existing, as well as the lowering of the deck to become a patio. The next issue is the side combined setback. We're existing at nineteen point three. The ordinance requires us to be at thirty five, and the proposed is fifteen point seven, the deviation of nineteen point three. But it's really it's really happening just because of the pie shape of this lot. The side yard setback itself is six point eight existing, our proposed is to go to three, but much further back, like back about eight feet from where the six point eight is right now, the required is to be twelve, so the variance would be nine. And our final is the additional setback related to height. Where where it's, we're existing at really existing at nine feet, we are three feet, because of that two story space, the ordinance require us to be at sixteen feet, however, the deviation therefore is thirteen. All of this is really being triggered by the fact of this pie shaped lot, you know, our side combined is really exaggerated in this case. I take you back to the actual, I may have a better site plan inside the application. Actually, I'll look at the tax, if you look at the tax map itself, you can see on our site how we're on the radius, and these three homes or these four homes are really creating that radius, and that's what's opening up all of this area. If I go to look at my actual survey, even on this side, I have almost twenty feet, and that's really because of the radius of this of Addison at this point. You can see how bad my rear yard area is because of the kind of pie shaped lot. So this lot easily appears to be able to accommodate this extra width because of its sort of large front yard area, and also because of the neighbor's large front yard area. The same is actually occurring on my neighbor where my cursor is now, which if I was looking at the house, it's my neighbor on the right. There, it it almost, when I measured it at the site last week, it's almost forty feet between the two neighbors. On the left side, remember I said that from the existing building to the neighbor's building is actually fifty feet, and with our addition, it would be forty five feet to their sort of one story addition on the garage itself. So with all of this in mind, I think that this is a a very approvable application, even though it appears as if my side yards are very tight, it's also true that my neighbor directly to the left has a driveway there and is gonna be caught to be twenty eight feet from their building to the property line for the driveway anyway, so they cannot encroach into the side yard, and they are approximately, you know, thirty feet right now. Okay, my neighbor, I'd like to go back to the owner, who I think could discuss a little bit of his agreement with the neighbor, but we have agreed also to plant, run plantings all the way down the property line to conceal his basketball hoop from our property and to conceal our property from his driveway and basketball. Now, are there any questions?
Are there questions from board members of this witness?
I have a movie that I can present where I drive down the street, if you'd like to see it.
Can I ask a question, Joe?
Yes, we're speaking.
Joy.
Can we get rid of this photograph?
Okay.
I'm sorry, who has a question?
I do.
Yes, Joy.
How, what is the width of the lot at the front of the house?
A hundred and five feet.
And what is in, this is in our five, what is the required lot width?
Seventy five.
So at that point where the variance is requested, is it true that the lot width is wider than required?
Yes, or a lot width, it's a pie lot.
I am.
Lot width is, yes.
But at that point?
At the front of the face of the building, it's one oh five.
And what is it at the rear face of the building? I'm scaling to be like eighty five. I'm scaling to be like 85 some.
I get 85 also.
So it is still wider than the required 75?
Yes, but has no rear yard.
Right.
Because the pie continues.
I understand, thank you.
Um, I also have a question.
Ms. Chairman.
Thanks. Why was the decision made? When I'm facing the house, you know, to the left-hand side, why was the decision made to expand the house further toward the neighboring lot?
Kamel, you may be better to answer that question. Because, and that, it's really because the owner wanted to get a bedroom onto the first floor with the pie-shaped block, that was really the only location to put it on the first floor. And I don't know, Kamel, if you have anything to add to that.
Sure, yeah, so I think we also thought about the back, but the thing is, there is kitchen here, and then there is a dining room. So basically, the bedroom in the back just didn't make any sense, basically. So the logical place was basically the area right behind us. And it would be separated, it would have a attached bath, and it would be like a ground floor bed and bath, so the, you know, basically for elderly parents.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions of this witness? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions of the witnesses? Mr. Clessy, you were about to tell us about some arrangements that were made between the applicant and the next-door neighbor?
Yes, I would actually like Kamal to explain, I think he can explain the final decisions better than I. But I met with the neighbor next door and went through discussion, and then Kamal finished it off. So Kamal, could you just comment on the most affected neighbor? And then maybe also the neighbor across the street?
Absolutely, absolutely. So our neighbors, the, our neighbors to the left, if you're facing the house from the front, from the street, the, we spoke with them, and what we agreed to do is we agreed to move our air conditioning units to the other side. And we agreed to move, slide the, the generator, which is on this side, four feet down, so that it moves away from the basketball hoop they have there. And, yeah, those, those are the, those are the things we discussed with our neighbor. And they, I, they told me they were fine with those changes. They, they were satisfied with the other rest of the building. And my neighbor on the other side, the opposite our house, had a question about basically the height of how high was the building going to go? So I laid out for him basically the current roof line and how much we were moving above it, and he was satisfied with that.
We also have agreed to plant that on, on our sheet, on our sheet BOA two, we have planted that property line, we planted that buffer. In addition, as part of our application, actually before we even speaking with the neighbor, try to minimize the impact of the building.
Where can I see that?
It's on BOA two. It's right, you can see all the I'm gonna say half-inch diameter circles that we added, going sort of looping from the building and going all the way back to the rear patio. And we put in four-foot green giants along that property line, I think. I can share to you again, if you would like me to, Joe.
Yes, I, I would.
Okay. Sometimes when I try to share twice, I can't go, but I got it. So we, I started, we had the generator located there. So I started here, and I came around and ran these conifers all the way, you know, back against our building to the back of the proposed patio. We ran that row of the conifers. Since then, we have agreed with the neighbor to remove these two-way AC units that are there and to take the generator and locate it back into this area. But we, we would leave all of the planting, but we think we have really buffered our building. This is really the property line. The neighbor's driveway is here, it's actually about five feet off of the property line, which is really the ordinance. The neighbor's driveway is really conforming. So we have planted that strip between our building and our property line.
Those conifers are how high?
I, I thought that they should go in at four-foot high, three feet on center. And I did that because I'm starting to think that we plant these conifers too big, and they get too big too quickly and look a little oversized. And remember that this gutter here is only about eight feet off of the ground. Right, because this, this area that we're talking about is really all a one-story building. So it's actually very low, so I didn't want the conifers to look overpowered on the building. So I put them in at four feet, they could be taller, that's just what I put them in.
Tim, where are you relocating the generator to?
The generator under, I
I just don't want to
The generator's going right there where the AC units were located.
Okay, and how far is the property line is that?
It's four feet.
Gotta be 12 feet off the property line.
The generator will have to go into the backyard then.
Yeah, you're gonna have to
It has to go into the backyard. Because the generator, the generator's actually already there. My guys have it as new, but it's actually existing. But it's only existing about five feet off the property line.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened, but.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? Are you, in the relocated location for the generator, you're gonna be able to provide power there?
I could have to run more lines.
No, you'd have to extend the lines.
Yeah, okay, and where, where's the air conditioning units gonna go?
The opposite side. And conforms, I'll take you over. Over on this side of the property. Conforms, we are about 20 feet off, and the next building is about 15 feet off, there's a, our driveway is actually right here on this side. Proposing to put them over here on the left, on the right side.
Thank you.
But conforms, when I set it back for the 24 feet, it conforms.
Quick clarificatory question of Tom. By taking the, the line out by five feet, the idea was to create a room, I, as I understood the applicant mention, five feet is not wide enough to create a room, so I'm guessing some part of the existing building is gonna be taken into that area to create the room at that level, is my understanding correct?
Correct, there's a existing room here that's approximately nine feet wide. And we're proposing to add right between the existing wall that we're demolishing to the new wall, we're adding five feet. That's because we ended up with the decision that the nine-foot room was just too narrow, and we have the fireplace here which really held us. So in order to get the additional room, we came out the five feet. That gave us a 14-foot room by 15-foot, which is that bedroom. Then we set back in and then built a full bath for that bedroom. That was real, that, this area is really the addition that we're talking about. It's actually very small. Then I'm coming here, this little two-foot strip is the addition, and then it gets a little bigger, this building, you know, approximately 100 square feet, that building right there is the addition. Kind of add here, that little area, this area, and then this five-by-16 area in the front for the bedroom.
Just to clarify, I mean, the two feet at the back, what purpose does that serve? I'm just in terms of, you know, I understand the, the front portions where nine is getting into a 14 feet. But that two-feet addition, is there a reason, what, what's driving that?
So this, this room, this room back here was actually existing.
It's actually one and a half feet. And yeah.
The room is existing at 12 feet, and we moved it out to 13 foot six. So we, we added a foot and a half to that room. That strip is a foot, well, it's really, it's a foot and a half wide, that strip. We just, just because we wanted the room to be a little wider, the 12 feet, 12 feet is a little narrow for a family room, you know, it's too small. It's too close to even be able to watch TV.
Tim, could you lower the ceiling height there to avoid that issue with the side yard?
Yes, yes, if we lowered, you know, this, this is a big square box. If this ceiling height was lowered, we could get it below, if we could get it below the, I guess, the 18-foot point, that we, we wouldn't, could avoid that variance, the, the last variance. If we, if we lowered this area, we would avoid that variance, yes. Thanks. And I, I think we could, we could do that, actually, as I look at the drawings, it's not difficult, I think my owner, you know, has his heart set on a tall rectangular space, but, you know. I'd like to ask the owner, you know.
Just one clarification there. The ceiling there is, the roof line is not increasing, going higher. It's staying where the roof line, current roof line is. But yes, if we need to lower it a little bit, we are flexible.
How much would, how much would you need to lower it to get rid of that variance, Tim?
I think I have that paper right here. I think that paper is actually in the application.
Yeah, you have to bring it down a little, the 12 feet or something like that?
It would have to be at the 12-foot point, so we would drop it six feet. We'd have to drop it six feet.
Okay. We are happy to do whatever, you know, you guys want. Let me explain what our thought was when we asked Tim for that height there was it's gonna be in the back of the house, and it's not increasing the current roof line, it stays, the current roof line in that portion stays the same. Instead of going like this, it becomes more flatter there in that portion. What that gives us is more natural light, because this side is facing, shall we say, south for us, and if you have some glass on top, we'll get some light in, basically during the day and in the evening from this side, basically, which is basically the west side.
Jessica, I was wrong, we only have to drop it three feet.
Right, it's like your drawing's like 18.
Yeah, I was
16.
Yes, so we could still get the same effect out of it by dropping it.
Yep.
No, you're muted.
Are you eliminating the last variance?
Yes, yes.
Is there anyone? Mr. 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 Class, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, for the record, you keep talking, Mr. Clessy, about eliminating the last variance, can you just, for the record, describe what that is?
Yes, the last, let me just find the right piece of paper. So the, I'm talking about the elimination of the fourth variance on Attachment E, which is my page 10 of the application. And that's the additional side yard setback above 18 feet. We would eliminate that, okay.
All right, that's the one that's eliminated. So you're seeking the other three variances, is that correct?
No, we, yes, that's correct.
On Attachment E. But is there anyone else in the audience who has any questions of the applicant or of Mr. Clessy?
I have no hands raised.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this application?
Eileen, I'm seeing a question in the
Yeah.
That doesn't, okay. Okay.
But I don't see any hands raised or, hold on, wait. Mar Su has a question or has a comment.
Who?
Mar Su.
Hi, we are an Addison Drive neighbor, and we wanted to
Do you want to swear? Hold on. Let's get them sworn, the person sworn in, please.
Do they have a camera?
Yes.
Can you turn your camera on, please?
Yes.
Raise your right hand, please, you swear to tell the truth, all the truth, and nothing but the truth, so be gotten a matter of no penny.
Yes.
Yeah, may we have your full name, please, and spell it, and your address?
Marla, M-A-R-L-A, Sultan, S-U-L-T-A-N, 77 Addison Drive.
Thank you.
Where is your home in relationship to this property?
Down the street.
Okay.
Three or four, four houses over. There was a video raised before, so I wanted to see that video to understand how this impacts Addison Drive. I think Mr. Classy was about to show a video before.
Mr. Classy, do you have a video?
Because, you know, as you go around Addison Drive, as it was pointed out, that's a pizza pie shape over there. So having appropriate appropriate land coverage is important, especially if there's a large extension planned.
Do you like me to go to the video? Mr. Stein? Yes. Okay, this is my A three, it's a video that I took on April first of the streetscape going down, going down Addison, or no, going, yeah, going down Addison till it hits, I guess, almost to the point to the end, to where it dead ends. So I guess, well, you'll see all the houses really on the left side.
Mr. Classy, will provide Ms. David with copies of all the exhibits that have been marked for identification as part of this hearing?
Yes, yes. So I start, I don't know what number that first house is on the left.
Your client's Your client's house will be on the left as well?
Yes, yes. Did somebody say they can't see?
You're not, you're not sharing the screen.
Yeah, I don't think you're sharing it.
We're not seeing anything.
You haven't shared it.
You got, you have my screen now?
Yeah, we're seeing now.
Okay.
Mr. Classy, you're in a car as you took this video?
Yes, I took the video in the car that I figured that's, I like the car because I think that's the way we mostly see these sites. See that, those green giants between the two properties, that's my fear with the green giants, they get overwhelming on the property. I'm going to start back from the beginning. Right here is where I'm saying that it's fifty feet existing from this one-story garage extension to the front corner of the brick of our house. We are asking tonight to come out five feet with a one-story extension. That's why I'm saying the gutter mark is right about there at about nine feet off the ground. And from that addition to this corner would then become forty-five feet. You see, that stake is the front corner of the building, and these stakes were up. I don't know if everybody had the opportunity to see them. There's another one back there, which you may see as we go along. There's another one right in front of the generator, and that is the back corner of the building. And remember that the back corner of the deck is now the back corner of the patio, but moved to the right about two more feet. So less encroachment off the property. I guessed it at forty, but when I actually measured it a later date, I found that it was actually fifty feet. This is the, our site, we're still in that sort of pie shape. So you can see now the sort of right side of our site where the neighbor immediately to the right after that. Right. Okay, is there any? I can exit that or? I don't know if that helped at all. I don't think it helped Amy because she looked like she's, I killed her with my video.
No, I'm good.
I'm just joking.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect to this application or any portion of it? Eileen, there's nobody there. All right, board members, we're now, if you take out your application form and turn to Attachment E, page ten, you'll see that the last side yard setback variance was removed. So we're talking about the three applica, three variances, all C variables, excuse me, all C variances, which require a simple majority.
Um, I'm I'm happy that the additional side yard setback variance was removed, but I still have concerns about the other variances, especially the three-foot side yard setback. I'm just concerned that it's too close and that this house is going to look really out of place in the neighborhood. And I'm concerned about, you know, just the massing and the way that it's going to look on the street, so. Curious to see what the other board members think.
Even with the reduced height, I think it still looks very large. I mean, it still presents a very, it extends the facade, the side facade pretty, you know, pretty significantly.
Yeah, I would agree with both Wolfgang and Jessica. The neighborhood has a very horizontal streetscape because of the type of housing that was done in that area, the split levels. And I think this would completely change the streetscape and not for the better. I know that it's a triangular shape, but I don't necessarily see that would be a hardship in side yards because where the house is situated, where the additions are situated, the width is not narrower than required. I don't really see what the hardship is.
I would agree with that.
Personal hardship of one intact family, that's a personal hardship. I'm trying to find the side hardship, and I don't see it.
Anyone else? All right, we are, I think it makes sense to deal with these three proposed variances as a group, as opposed to breaking them down because they're all relating, related, as I understand it, to the proposed addition to the left side of the house. So we've heard from three or four board members. Anyone else have something they would like to say before I ask if there's a motion? The motion can be to approve or to deny. I don't see any hands, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion to approve?
May I, may I say something?
Sorry, the
The public portion has been, or the application has been closed.
All right, that motion to approve the three variances fails for lack of a second. Is there a motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to deny.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A yes vote is to deny.
Rick Klattner?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Amy Morris?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. The application is denied.
Well, thank you.
Back, that's called, back to the drawing board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's get to the next one is One Exeter Road, upneath Dimon.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt for one second? I I know that there past the the Demond application, there's another application for, I think it's New Singular Wireless that you referenced earlier. And I am just asking for the benefit of both Mr. Drill and those members of the public, as well as the applicant who who will be participating in that hearing, whether the board intends to get to that application this evening as a courtesy to those.
The answer is we need to hear from the substitute attorney in that matter before I can answer that question.
Want me to bring you over?
Pardon me?
Want me to bring Mr. Joe over?
Not now. We're going to go to the One Exeter Road application. Bonds are here.
Yes.
Do the Demons have any expert witnesses with them tonight?
I think it's just them.
Just us, please.
Okay, then, Mr. Fishman, do you want to have them sworn, please? Okay, raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So have you gotten the matter now pending?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, who is going first or who's testifying?
I mean, I I can go first.
Okay, may we have your full name, please, spell it and address?
Upneath, my first name is Upneath, U S Umbrella, P S Peter, Nancy, Eric, Eric Thomas. And my last name, Dimon, David, Henry, Inkpot, Mary, Apple, Nancy.
And your address, please.
One Exeter Road, Short Hills.
Thank you. Please speak slowly and mildly, please. Thank you.
Yes, please. So we just move here, I mean, I don't know if Rajiv is I can go, please guide us.
Yes, please.
First time, we might be seeking some guidance. Thank you. So we moved here not a year ago.
Please speak slowly.
Yes, please. So we moved here not, it's not an an year yet. And we are a family of three. We moved here from urban area primarily for schools. And another reason for moving here is to provide our eight-year-old some space, outdoor space, so he can be, he can experience the life in suburbs. That's how both of us, we grew up when we were, you know, kids. We are seeking variance today for two reasons. One, if we can put a small patio outside, we don't have any space to sit. Then we bought the property that was in our, in our mind that we will put some, some sort of small space to sit outside so we can enjoy our backyard and watch our son play. And if we can also put some, I mean, we are very flexible in size, some sort of monkey bar and a swing. Because since we moved here due to COVID, my son has not been out to any public parks. We don't know anyone here, he hasn't made any friends. He's pretty much indoor since we are here. And that's, that's a big concern right now for us, not getting any, any sort of exercise for his age. So that these are our two requests. And after speaking to some contractors, we came up with a small-sized patio. We are flexible fit with both sizes. And in anticipation of this patio, we have also, we are in the process right now in putting seven-feet-tall trees to screen the entire area around our property. We have long trees, I mean, good-sized trees on Old Short Hill. And there are two spots that are missing in the process of planting more big trees over there.
Is there any other testimony for the applicant?
Sure, I have a quick question. My attachment E isn't filled out at all.
In the application?
Yeah.
Let me look at mine.
I'm just trying to figure out, I'm just going off, actually, I'm just going off the the survey to try to get the size of the lot.
Your, your E is not filled out?
No, E is, F is not.
My E is totally blank.
That's, that's F.
Sorry, F, my F, sorry, my F, my F is totally blank.
Yeah, for this, in a situation like this, like, we don't typically require them to fill it out because, well, especially in this case, we, we kind of it was issued and then withdrawn because we, I realized because this was just swings, and it was really just eighty-foot setback.
Right.
I think I filled it out after the fact, page two. It's actually ten feet off the property line.
Yeah.
And the patio is fifty feet off the front yard, and the swings are sixty feet off the front yard where eighty is required.
Yeah.
Eighty is required because this is a corner lot.
Right, but the swings meet the twelve-foot setback.
Yeah.
They just can't meet the eighty.
All right, board members, anyone of a, first of all, is there anyone from the audience who has any questions? This is Dimon. Is there anyone in the audience who has any comments he or she would like to make with respect to this application?
No hands.
Okay, board members, especially for those of you, I'm assuming, everybody who went to the property, you have any creative comments?
So I I just want to, just want to specify that we are talking about a patio and not a deck.
No, please.
Sometimes it's kind of interchangeable, but not.
On our side, we have some stairs from the old time, I believe. I mean, we just recently bought this property. So we are just, we were thinking if we can just, you know, make a little pathway and then just make a small patio so we can watch our son even his outdoor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you're saying then, on that side, there you would be also putting down paving, a patio, a paved section leading from the door to the patio?
Um, there are some, I think, bluestones from the last time by the door already.
By the door, yeah.
Yes, please, on the side, on this, I think it is in the in the, what is it called?
Service. It's on the last page.
It's on the last page, yeah.
But yeah, the idea is we'll be putting that favors to go.
We'll just replace the old ones with the new ones, basically. Because that's a very old bluestone, we just, we'll change it to whatever we'll use for the patio, so it can just look the same.
All right, board members, do you have any comments about this case? All right, board members, do you have any comments about this case?
I, I think that there's a real hardship here with the, with, with the setback here. If I'm, if I'm reading the plans correctly, I just don't believe with the eighty feet required that the applicant would be able to put in a patio or a swing set. So, you know, the, the swing set is, Eileen, you said it does meet the twelve yard, the, the twelve-foot setback?
It does.
I think if the eighty feet is, would be complied with, it might, it might be on the neighbor's property.
Yeah. Yep.
I'm sorry, I, I think I missed it. You're saying that, that the, the accessory structure side setback, it, it does actually meet the twelve?
Yes.
Yes, each to twelve, but it doesn't meet eighty feet.
So that's, there's no longer value.
It, it's, it's kind of questionable, honestly, when it was presented. It's really the only portion that is actually encroaching into the twelve foot is actually the pathway that's leading to the patio.
Oh.
I don't even know that, that could actually qualify as, because we typically do a walkway. Because if the portion that's really encroaching is probably less than a foot of walkway area to the patio.
But, but it's okay, that, thank you.
Let me just comment, oh, I had a, I went and looked at the property and it seemed to me that the, both the swing set and the patio could be in some fashion hidden by evergreens from the neighbors next door.
Yeah. Mr. Steinberg, when we actually moved here, our neighbor, he's a very nice gentleman. He approached us. He said he did mention it to the previous owner as well, where he wanted either the previous owner at that time or us to go on board so we can together plant evergreens. And we agreed to that, so we are waiting for him to tell us when he's ready so we can put the evergreens in between the two property lines, please.
Well, it is, I, one of the other problems that I saw is that when you look at the survey, it talks about a wood fence being on that property line.
That is, yeah.
I looked at that fence, it's basically hip-high, it's not, it's, it's a longitudinal log fence that doesn't hide anything from anybody.
Yeah, I think it's there from very long, I, I.
Yes, it probably was put there, I would say, in the nineteen twenties, probably nineteen thirties or something.
Absolutely. I believe it's there from very.
I, I, the problem that I have with your, you talking about, you met with your neighbor. This board is required to grant variances and very often we have to make sure that when we grant the variances, which I sense are going to be granted, in this case, it's our responsibility to see that the, what the owner proposes to put on the property is in fact shielded by evergreens from the property next door. So I think that this is a case where my, for myself, I would vote yes. Only on the grounds that, on the, with the condition, I should say, that if you look at the survey, that to the right of the swing set and between the swing set and the property line, there'd be a row of evergreens that be planted there. And likewise at the patio site, I don't know how many would be required to feel from the neighbor, but I would say that it would probably be a minimum of five evergreens that would be planted there. And I would say not less than, I would think, four feet above the root ball. But I'd be happy to hear what other board members have to say about that.
I was going to ask, if the swing set is sufficiently off the property line, is it incumbent on them to plant anything?
The, well, that's a very good point. You're saying that, that they meet the setback from the property line. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep.
So you're questioning whether we have right to planting in that area?
That, that would be my, yes, that would be my, that is my point. I guess where the walkway is and where there is, where there is an encroachment into that area, then I guess that's, that's something where we, where we have grounds to speak, but on, on the, the swing set, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. Well, counsel, that's a very good question. And I, unless counsel overrides me, I would say that Wolfgang has raised a very good point. The variance that we're granting is really from the other side, it's from Short Hill's side. And I think it's probably, you're probably correct that for us to insist that there be a condition that the planning be put in is probably overstepping the authority of the board.
Just, just to remind the board of, of two aspects of, of that question and comment. Number one is that as an application for any single-family home, they're not subject to site plan approval. And number two, that any condition that is imposed by the board as a condition of approval will typically be one that mitigates, especially when it comes to landscaping, that mitigates any detrimental impact that may be caused by the variance that you may be granting.
Eileen?
Yes.
A question for you. The second variance, excuse me, the second variance says accessory structure side setback. What does that refer to?
That was the enlargement, the patio wrapping around. And there's this very small portion of it that extends beyond the twelve foot, that wraparound area that's wrapping around to the, I guess, the stairs.
Is there a piece of the house as well, like a tiny piece in the corner?
Yeah.
Kind of looks like it, like the, it could be a little piece of the corner of the house.
That's the twelve-foot setback, yeah, that's already, that's pre-existing, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Well, you know, in light of the question that's been raised and in light of the testimony of the witness that she has been talking to the next-door neighbor and they have agreed to plant trees along that property, excuse me, along that property line. I, I think that the condition is probably inapplicable in this case. And is there a motion to approve the application?
Motion to approve is presented.
Is there a second?
Second. Craig Clitner?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Taurus?
Yes.
Amy Morris?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Okay, now we, now we get to the fun part of the evening.
One second.
What time is it, ten oh two? All right, now we have a new counsel coming in, right?
Yeah, I'm going to wait for, for Mr. Drill to appear and then I'm going to be signing off because I have a conflict with this next application.
Right.
Good seeing all of you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I brought Jonathan over.
Jonathan, there he is.
Good evening, everybody. It's been very enjoyable watching you all in action.
Mr. Drill, I bid you adieu. I bid you adieu.
Okay, Jonathan, where do things stand?
Here's where things stand. As the board is aware, the application's been filed. A dispute surfaced about whether or not the owner of the property had consented to the application being filed. I rendered an opinion that consent is not really the issue. The issue is whether the, the entity that filed the application is a applicant under the municipal land use law, because applicant under the municipal land use law defined as a developer and a developer is defined under the municipal land use law as including a person having an enforceable proprietary interest. So I rendered an opinion that the applicant in this case did have a proprietary interest. And then the owner of the property and the applicant and the, a third party entered into discussions which were, I'm not going to say resolved, they were kind of resolved today with the property owner is willing to withdraw its objection to the jurisdiction of the board hearing the application, which again, my opinion is the board does have jurisdiction to hear the application, even if there was an objection, but the property owner has withdrawn the app, the objection to the application on the condition that if the board grants the application, that the board impose as a condition that a sidewalk bridge be constructed during the installation of the cellular equipment on the roof to protect people walking on the sidewalk from anything falling off the building. And so after talking with all the attorneys, I'm not going to say that the attorney for AT&amp;T will consent to that condition, but I believe if you ask her, if the board imposes that condition, the applicant will comply with it. So where are we? In my opinion, the application should go on. It's up to the board if you want to start it at ten o'clock, but the application should go on. They have three witnesses, the applicant attorney tells me.
How many?
Three.
Three.
They have an RF expert, civil engineer, and a planner. So unless you guys are willing to go to twelve midnight or after, I don't think this application's being finished tonight.
No, I'm sure it's not. Eileen, if it's not heard tonight, I know you're, you're ready to pass out.
And I. Killing me.
You, you may want to hear from the applicant's attorney. You may want to let her in. Her name is Judy Fairweather.
Let me do that. Hold on.
I think that's a good idea.
She's just listed as Judy, I believe, that's how I'm reading. And I know Mr. Fior is the, I believe he's attorney for.
For the property owner, so if he's in the waiting room, let's get him in too.
He's as well.
And you could ask both of them once they're in if what I said was accurate. Hopefully they'll both say yes.
We'll find out soon enough.
Hi.
So Ms. Fairweather and Mr. Fior, you heard what I said. Was I accurate?
I believe you were completely accurate. Phil?
I agree with that, Jonathan.
Okay.
Okay, Eileen, do, does, does every board member have the documentation in this case?
What document, what do you, I, I, wait, what are you talking about?
Well, I don't know, it was, I, I don't have any filed application among my papers.
You don't have what?
A filed application.
You have this application.
Well, I can't, then I've lost it. Okay.
Was, that you got this for a previous meeting?
You guys got this, I believe, in March.
Yeah.
I think in March, right. But that's all right, we, if you, if you guys like, would like to put on your first witness, that's fine.
Okay, sounds good. Eileen Daniel Panesso, radio frequency engineer. Can you let him in, please? And while we're letting Dan in, let me just give you a little brief overview. So we are proposing to put sixteen antennas and a generator on the roof of the property at three forty Milburn Ave. We are not a permitted use. Back in twenty thirteen, you actually gave us permission, this board gave permission for us to put eleven antennas. The antennas were not put up. Hi, Dan, I see you. The antennas were not put up. It was not built. I need a use variance.
Excuse me, Ms. Judy, I'm sorry, Mr. Court reporter, you have to speak a little more slowly and the way it's coming across on the computer is not like in person.
Got it.
If, if you can please pay attention to that, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So the relief that I'm requesting is a use variance, a height variance, and preliminary and final site plan approval.
And you also need a C variance because you're going to have things too close to the property line.
Actually, John, when the engineer and the planner looked at it, they're going to talk about it. I think we actually meet it because the adjacent property was rezoned and I think we had the old setbacks, but they'll talk about it.
Okay, so you think that that might be eliminated?
I think that might be eliminated.
Okay.
So what I'd like to start with is Dan Panesso, who's my radio frequency engineer, to explain why we need this site, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Dan, raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand to thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So have you gotten the matter now pending?
Yes, I do. First name, Dan.
I'm sorry, you state your names from the place and your address.
Yes, first name, Daniel, last name, Penesso, P E N E S S O. Address is fifteen East Midland Avenue, Paramus, New Jersey. I am a radio frequency engineer. I have a bachelor of science in electronic engineering. I have been employed as a radio frequency engineer with regards to designing implementation of wireless networks, such as what's being proposed before the board tonight. I have been accepted hundreds of times in the past twenty years throughout the state of New Jersey as well as New York as an RF expert.
Uh, Dan, one more thing I'd like to ask you. Are you responsible for the site before the board?
I'm sorry, for some reason, it's not coming across clearly.
Judy, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If you, it might be hard, but you can not only have to slow down and talk louder, but you have to try to get your voice lower.
Lower?
It's a strange situation with this computer. Everybody has different components in their units and it comes across.
Oh, okay.
That's better.
Very interesting. Dan, are you responsible for the design of the site before the board this evening?
Yes, I am.
Great. I'm not going to talk much, Dan. Can you please explain the current coverage at AT&amp;T? Would you like to start with propagation maps that you've done?
Sure, I'll, I'll share the screen.
And then can he show the screen?
Yeah, I am able, one moment.
And I'm going to, I'm going to ask, anything you show on the screen, if it's already been submitted to the board, because I know that there are a bunch of reports and I've seen some propagation maps. Hopefully, everything you're going to show has already been submitted so we don't have to mark it as an exhibit. If you're going to show something that's not in one of the reports or one of the submissions to the board, please tell us so we can mark it as an exhibit. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Understood, yes. These are exhibits that were submitted with the application. This exhibit that I'm sharing now with the board is labeled on the lower left corner, map number one, AT&amp;T neighboring coverage. This has been created November twenty-fourth. This has been created November 24 by me in 2020. This exhibit depicts what the existing coverage is from AT&amp;T's existing on-air sites. Approximately in the center of the map is the location of the site labeled WG45. And the purple dots on the map represent AT&amp;T's existing on-air sites. The blue color on the map represents from the existing on-air sites reliable in-building coverage. The green on the map represents reliable in-vehicle coverage. This site that's being proposed before the board tonight is to provide to get, we have unreliable coverage, which is in the white areas along Milburn Avenue, Main Street, and then north of Main Street into the residential area, which I'm using my cursor to circle. This site is to alleviate that and bring the level of coverage fill that area where the white areas are so that we have seamless reliable coverage. I'd also like to add that AT&amp;T was awarded 700 megahertz spectrum by FirstNet, which is a first responder network that is being implemented on all of AT&amp;T's existing on-air sites, as well as all AT&amp;T new site builds. And this service will provide first responders a dedicated interoperable network nationwide, that if there's ever an emergency, that spectrum is dedicated and allocated specifically for first responders on AT&amp;T's network.
Okay, Mr. Panesso, can you please blow up that map so the board can see the white area along Milburn Avenue?
Sure, let's like this. This way, you mean?
That's right.
Yeah. So as you can see, the area that's in white, those are the areas of unreliable coverage. Does the board care to hear about the name? Shall I go through and list all the existing on-air sites, or?
That's up to the chairman.
How an unreliable area can be surrounded by
Excuse me.
Can you hear me now?
Better, yes.
Could you explain how an unreliable area can be surrounded by reliable areas?
Right, the existing sites that you see with the purple dots are sites that are existing on AT&amp;T's network that are providing coverage to the neighboring municipalities, as well as into Milburn. But as you can see here, where we have the white areas, these existing on-air sites can only provide a certain footprint of coverage. We have to have numerous sites within the network in order to provide a coverage. And each cell site is a two-way communication system between the user and the cell site that's serving the users. So right now, we have an area that I'm tracing with my cursor, which is currently unreliable within AT&amp;T's network. And the site that we're proposing before the board is to alleviate that gap, these gaps. So then I'll show another exhibit that will show you what will be achieved if this site were approved and integrated into the network.
Right, but before you take this exhibit off, can we ask the board chairman? Mr. Chairman, do you want this witness to identify each of those purple dots, where it is, et cetera, or is this good enough for the board to see? I mean, some of us who have done a lot of these cell, I'm looking at this, I know what it means. I doubt a lot of your board members know what it means, but I don't know.
I don't think that it's necessary to go into that kind of detail, but I do think that it would be useful to blow up again.
Sure.
That we can see Milburn Avenue unreliable site. There it is.
Yeah, I'll move it. Try to center. Is that centered better? Yeah.
That's better, Dan.
May I ask a quick question, Chairman?
Sure.
What does, what is this color denote? Blues, greens, and the whites?
Yes, so this is based on 700 megahertz long-term evolution, which is LTE. This is on the bottom of the map, which I'm reading. And this is the signal strength, I mean, the frequency that we're using, which is the 700 megahertz, which would propagate the best for AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T is licensed from 700 megahertz up to 2,300 megahertz. So the lower the frequency band, the better that the propagation would be from that band. So since we operate in higher bands, those footprints of coverage would be less. So I'm showing what the best coverage would be from the lowest band that AT&amp;T operates in. If we were to show bands in the higher band, higher frequency, we would see even more gaps in coverage. And AT&amp;T, every carrier that's operating in this market has a certain amount of spec, like 700, but a certain amount of channels or certain bandwidth, I should say, that is allocated in each spectrum. So we need to operate in all the bands to serve all the subscribers that are on the network. There's, we don't have enough spectrum in each band to just operate in one band. That's why many bands are licensed to the carriers.
Mr. Panesso, I think the board member's asking is
Yeah.
What does the blue stand for?
So the blue stands for
That's right.
You said the blue stood for in-building coverage and the green stood for in-vehicle coverage.
Correct.
The board doesn't understand what the difference between in-building coverage is and in-vehicle coverage is. And so you have to, you have to explain that.
Got you. So for reliable in-building coverage, we have to have a certain signal strength if a subscriber's inside.
Excuse me, you have to, excuse me, you have to speak one at a time. You can't speak together, please.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
I've been here since seven o'clock, you know, and this is, you have to slow it down too, please.
What is the signal strength that you need to have in-building coverage reflected in blue?
Yes.
What is the signal strength that you need to have in-vehicle coverage, which is shown in green?
So for reliable in-building coverage, we need to have negative 95 dBm. And for reliable in-vehicle, we need to have negative 105 dBm. That's the signal strength criteria for a call to be sustained, whether you're in building or in vehicle.
And what does dBm stand for?
That's a unit of measurement. And that's, I'm going to tell you exactly what that means.
That's right.
Yes, so dBm stands for decibel-miliwatts.
And Dan, the higher the number, even though it's higher, it's actually less, correct?
Correct. Correct, it's weaker based, weaker.
Also, Dan, you were explaining the coverage. Can you tell them about AT&amp;T and FirstNet? And that, and that coverage that AT&amp;T is now giving across the country, including New Jersey, who's opted into FirstNet?
Yes, that's what I explained. It's AT&amp;T was allocated in a 700 megahertz spectrum to be awarded FirstNet, which is first responders' network, which is for, as I stated prior, for if there's an emergency, first responders, whether they're coming from in Milburn or another state to help in an emergency, that spectrum is allocated dedicated for first responders only. So there would be no public use on the network at that time when there is an incident or an emergency. So they have dedicated use, which is going to be implemented on all existing sites, as well as new build sites.
And Dan, that was in response to 9/11, when the different counties in New Jersey couldn't even talk to each other, let alone New York and New Jersey?
That's correct, yes.
I'm sorry, go on.
I think, Mr. Panesso, I think the one other thing to answer this, the board member's question who asked about to explain the green and the blue is if you need negative 95 dBm for in-building coverage, to have reliable in-building coverage, and if you need negative 105 dBm to have reliable in-vehicle coverage, am I correct that areas in green would not have good in-building coverage? Areas in blue would have good in-vehicle and in good in-building coverage, but areas in green would not have good reliable in-building, and areas in white would have neither reliable in-building or in-vehicle. Is that correct?
Yes, you are correct.
The board member who asked the question, has that answered your questions?
That's right, thank you.
You know, it might be easier if you showed us before and after. So this is a before. Do you have an after?
Yes, I'll stop.
Would be after?
Now I'm sharing another exhibit, which is shouldn't be coming up.
It's up.
Now, this exhibit is labeled map two, AT&amp;T proposed composite coverage, dated November 24, 2020, prepared by me. And this, as you can see, where the yellow star is the proposed location, if the site were approved and integrated into AT&amp;T's network, you can see now that the area that was unreliable has now been fulfilled with the site that's being proposed.
Can you blow that up also, please?
Yes, yes.
And can you center, can you center it on, to put Milburn Avenue in the middle?
Yes. This is Milburn Avenue.
So there's still a couple areas of white along Milburn Avenue, but most of the white is now green, is what you're saying?
That's correct, yes. And this is due to this tool propagate, the propagation map, to depict the topography and morphology based on the antenna height that we have for the location, as well as the existing on-air sites. So as you can see, the change in topography as we go east varies, and then this is why, and the site is not, we don't, this is a rooftop site, so the antenna center lines are not that high. So it doesn't propagate as far as we would if we had a monopole 100 feet in the air for our antenna center line. So we're getting a good amount of coverage to cover the area, you know, the residential zone, as well as the commercial area with this site, to fulfill our needs.
Dan, you also did a study in regard to the energy output of this site, because there's another carrier up there?
Yes.
You tell me, when you did the analysis of the energy from the current carrier and then our additional antennas, how does, how does the energy output from those two together, how does it fit in with the requirements of the FCC and the New Jersey Radiation Protection Act?
Yes, so as Judy just mentioned, T-Mobile currently exists on the rooftop. So we have to do a calculation cumulatively for both T-Mobile, as well as the proposed AT&amp;T installation. The FCC general population MPE limit is allowed to go up to 100%. The combined output between the two installations, if this were approved, would be 18.6285% of the FCC general population MPE limit, which is well below the 100% reference point for compliance. So we are five times, more than five times below the limit that's established as safe for continuous human exposure to the RF emissions from antennas. The state of New Jersey guidelines are five times less stringent, so we're in full compliance with that as well by a factor of 25.
And Dan, your opinion as a radio frequency engineer is that AT&amp;T, is it your opinion that AT&amp;T needs this site in order to provide adequate coverage to its customers?
Yes.
And under AT&amp;T's license from the FCC, they're required to provide coverage to their customers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions for Dan.
Are there any questions of this witness from board members?
I'll stop sharing. Just one additional question regarding the RF maps. Those maps depict coverage at seven, at the frequency of 700 megahertz.
That's correct.
Right, but that does not mean that that is a frequency at which AT&amp;T is currently operating or which they propose to operate necessarily.
Oh, we are licensed to operate in 700 mega, the bandwidth that I mentioned for the FirstNet was awarded to us recently. We did have, we have blocks within the 700 megahertz currently that we're operating in. And as I stated, if I were to show the higher bands, we would show a larger gap in coverage. Because, shall I go further to explain that, or?
If you could, please.
So if we were, if I were to show exhibits in the higher bands, we would see even greater, greater areas of insufficient coverage, unreliable coverage than what we see, than what I showed in the exhibits in the application. So we have a need at 700, so we, what I'm saying is, a need is at 700, so there's definitely a need at the higher bands, in the higher bands.
Okay. Any other questions for this witness?
Yeah, approximately, you know, how many AT&amp;T customers are we talking about in this affected area?
This is a question that gets brought up, and it's not about how many AT&amp;T subscribers are just in this area. AT&amp;T is a nationwide network. And it would be, it's for every customer within AT&amp;T's network. That's, the reason for a cell site isn't just for people that are in Milburn. It could be people traveling through Milburn. I live in Paramus, and I go to Milburn, and I'm an AT&amp;T subscriber. My phone should work in Milburn, as well as Paramus, or wherever else I'm traveling to.
And Dan, AT&amp;T has approximately 40% of all people who have cell phones, so the if you wanted to just look at it kind of openly, and is that it would be 40% of whoever travels around Milburn?
That's correct, yes.
And that you, you design our systems pursuant to the standards in the industry, correct?
Correct, and that we are licensed by the FCC, and we're mandated to build out the network as well.
And the modeling you use and the tools you use to build out the network is standard in the industry by all carriers, correct?
That's correct, yes.
I don't know if that helped, but.
Any other questions of this witness? All right, Judy. We have, we have a time problem here. We're at 10:29.
Mr. Chairman, is there any way that you could ask Eileen if she could see if there's any members of the public who have any questions for this witness?
That's a good question.
I do not see any hands raised.
Now, Judy, how many more witnesses do you have?
I have two more witnesses, Mr. Chair, but I understand if you want to carry me to another date, because it's very late, and I can see some people are a little tired.
Well, yeah. We try to end this, these meetings at about 10:30.
Understood.
Okay, Eileen, do you have any clue when we can get these people back in here?
Um, probably the soonest would be May 17.
May 17?
Fine with me.
You can make it. I, Colleen and Paul, I know you're not on, but you can text me real quick if May 17th doesn't work for you. Can you do that?
I assume Colleen must be your civil engineer and Paul must be your planner?
Yes. And I'm just waiting a second for a text.
Jonathan, is that day good for you?
Yep, that day's good for me.
Colleen is okay. Paul, text me, please. The 17th is also good for me. I've not heard back from him, but I'm sure he will work it out. Oh, Paul, an issue, but we'll make it work. Okay, we're fine. Thank you.
So this matter will be carried without the necessity of additional publication or notices sent to joining property owners to the evening of May the 17th at 7:00 PM. This will be a Zoom meeting.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay if my radio frequency engineer, can he be dismissed, or do you think there'll be additional questions for him?
I don't think there'll be any additional questions for him.
Okay, great. Thank you all so much. Thank you for staying late.
Can we just, can we just find out, Eileen, what else do you have on the agenda on May 17th? Because I think you should, if you have other things, I think you should put your regular applications with your regular attorney on first.
Yes.
Just why not?
I have only three other matters. That's why I put them on there, and then I'll close it at just those four. But I'll put the other three first.
Okay. And I assume those other three are homeowners cases?
Yes, yes.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Pleasure meeting everybody, by the way. I'll see you on the 17th.
Good to meet you.
So moved.
Wolfgang, is that a motion to adjourn?
It was Steve.
It was Craig, I think. But also
Okay, Wolfgang, you got the second one.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See you all on the
Thank you. Good night.
Night.